Conference recording started.
Good evening. I call to order the Perump Regional Planning Commission meeting for July 13th, and I'd like all of you to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will open up public comment. No action will be taken on matters raised under public comment until the matter itself has been included on an agenda as an action item. There is a three-minute time limit per person. You're requested to speak to limit comments to items not on the agenda. So if you are wanting to talk about something that is on this agenda, now is not the time. If you want to talk about something that we have not posted on this agenda, the floor is yours.
Hello. My name is Nicole Walters. Do I have to spell my last name also?
Yes.
W A L T E R S. I want to let everybody know about a new news channel out here, No Opinion News. It is found at www.josh, J O S H, W H O T V dot com slash channel slash No Opinion News. Trying to get it out there. I have no paid narrative. Definitely a little nervous speaking in front of people, though, because there's a lot of people here tonight. But I do my own research and, you know, trying to have something different than a paid narrative, so that way people can, you know, find out the truth. Another thing I want to talk about, child sex trafficking. It is going on. Children need to be saved. Our borders are not secure. We need to stand up for this. And just so you guys know, messing with farmers has not turned out very well in other countries. I mean, we need to stick together. We need to be a community. We need to support each other. We need to, you know, have local farmers, so that way we can, you know, keep our communities, you know, funded with food. You know, we're not going to be able to get it everywhere else. And I just want you guys to keep that in mind later. Thank you and have a great day.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Laura Larson, L A R S E N. I moved from Las Vegas to Perump seven and a half years ago. It's the first time I've ever been to a planning meeting. But you know what? I need to express, if I'm going to express something at the commissioners' meeting, I sure the heck I'm going to go do it here, okay? You know what? We need to sit there and stick together as a community. We're having sex trafficking. We're having the government sit there, give federal funding regarding the fact of their own agenda that they want to sit there and put on the American people. And this is the United States of Republic, okay? The United States of America Incorporated has been bankrupt since last, since 2020. We need to stick together regarding the fact of what's happening. Our border is wide open. We're allowing illegals coming into our country. And there's a lot of different things that are going on regarding the fact of different plants in California, Oklahoma, regarding the fact all over the country of food shortages. You think it's going to be bad now? Just wait when we sit there and going to need our farmers to sit there and feed our family. It's bad enough they're already doing it for the baby formula. What are we going to do? Where are we going to turn to? We got to stay with the local communities and stop going with the corporations, because they're trying to sit there and give us synthetic meat to eat. You want to eat that? I don't think anyone in this room wants to eat synthetic meat. We're going to end up going back to our farmers and needing them. So you got to think about that when you get down to the Agenda 11, when you're going to submit, okay? I understand. I'm not going to talk about it anymore. I'm going to wait until the 11. But I want to let you know regarding the fact that we have to stick together, okay? You guys have given an oath to actually sit there and fulfill your oath of the Constitution. Stay with the Constitution, because you know what? That's all we have. That's our God-given rights regarding the fact of that when I moved out here to Perump, okay, I was getting away from that regarding the fact of being a dictatorship. I don't need that. We don't need that as a community. We all need to stick together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, but your three minutes are up. Do you have anyone on the phone?
I have no comments on the phone.
And seeing no one else at the podium, I'm going to close public comment at this time. For possible action, our annual election of officers, we need to nominate and elect officers for our current fiscal year, July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2023. The election of an officer shall be by affirmative vote of not less than four members of the planning commission. First, I'll entertain motions for chairman.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to nominate Beth Lee to the chair.
Do I have a second for Commissioner Beth Lee for chairman? I have a motion and a second on the floor. I'll call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Blackstock.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Beth Lee stays chair. I'll take nominations for vice chair now.
I would like to make a nomination for vice chair. Pam Taylor for chair or vice chair.
I second.
With a motion and a second, I will call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Turner.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I just didn't feel right voting for myself, so. At this time, I'll take nominations for secretary clerk and our timekeeper.
I'll make a nomination of Gina Meredith.
I'll second that.
With a motion and a second on the floor, I will take the vote, starting with Commissioner Blackstock.
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Aye.
All right, we have our board for the next year. So thank you very much, everyone. For possible action, approval of minutes of the Perump Regional Planning Commission meeting for May 11th, 2022. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? Do you have any comments or corrections? Seeing none, I will open it to public comment. Do we have any public comment on our minutes for our May 11th, 2022 meeting?
I have no comments on the phone.
Seeing none, I will close public comment. And if there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes as they stand.
I will second.
With the motion on the floor, I will call for the motion, starting with Commissioner Turner.
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Aye.
Motion passes. For possible action, approval of modification to the agenda. This is approval of our agenda after considering requests to rearrange, hold, or remove items. Staff, do we have any requests to rearrange?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. I would like to ask that we move item 11 to our first item, if we can. And other than that, that's it.
Will that disrupt the presentation by Tim Bohannon's timing at all? Nope, okay. One second.
We have to have a motion.
Oh, that's right. I move that we move item 11 to the top of the agenda, so we get to everyone's concerns.
I will be happy to second that.
With a motion and a second, I'll entertain the vote, starting with Commissioner Blackstock to move item 11.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. When we get to the regular agenda, 11 will be heard before item 8.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes?
I apologize for interrupting. Michelle Nelson from the DA's office. Was there public comment requested for item number five? It was an action item?
No, there was not public comment. So I guess we have to reopen item 5, so we can ask for public comment on item 5. And then we'll have to redo a motion and recast our vote.
Well, Chair, if I may, we do not have to redo the motion. If we could just reopen item number 5 and then ask for public comment, that would be fine.
Okay. So we'll reopen approval or modification to the agenda. And do we have any public comment on that?
Aye, Tim Bohannon, B O H A N N O N. I believe it would be a wonderful idea if we handled number 11 before we handle number 8. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Bohannon. Do we have any other public comment?
Madam Chair, according to the U.S. Census, Nye County now has over 50,000 population. I'm wondering if item 11, because this is a Nye County bill right here, is even appropriate. My name is Dwight Lilly, I'm sorry. L I L Y. This item here is titled, I mean, this item says Nye County ordinance. And Nye County does not have, as I understand, a new board that covers the entire county. This has traditionally been Perump ordinance, but with the population increase to over 50,000 in county, we're now required by the state of Nevada to have a Nye County planning board. Has this been heard in Tonopah or Amago Valley or anything?
Mister Lilly, we're not on number 11 yet, please.
I'm just questioning the legality of the bill.
All this is, is us deciding on our agenda. This is not that public comment. Yes, ma'am. Our DA wanted to say something?
Yes, Chair, thank you. I was just going to, and I apologize for interrupting, Mr. Lilly. This public comment was only for number 5, for the approval of the agenda. When item number 11 comes forward, then Mr. Lilly may make his public comment at that time.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on the agenda itself, not on individual items on the agenda?
I have no comments on the phone.
Seeing none, I'll close the item and the vote stands. Any, moving on to correspondence and announcements, any correspondence and announcements tonight? Actually, we have two new members. One has joined us tonight, so I would like to introduce Jake Skinner as one of our newest members of the planning commission. And unable to join us tonight is current chair, Beth Lee, so I'm taking her place temporarily. And Deborah Hayden is also a new member who unfortunately was not able to join us tonight. So we look forward to getting to meet Deborah. And seeing no other correspondence or announcements, do I need to get public comment on our correspondence or announcements?
No.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our commission committee and directors' reports. B O C C liaison.
Currently, no issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Director Wagner?
Good evening again. I've got our statistics for you. Unfortunately, we were unable to have a meeting last month, but, so I'm going to give you numbers for both months. For planning applications for the month of May, we had 241, which was an increase of 61 over the previous month. And total applications processed was 190, which was 47 more than the previous month. For June, we had 246, which was another increase of 5 over the month of May. And total applications processed was 163, which was actually a decrease of 27 over the previous month. Since July 1st of last year, of 2021, through June 30th of this year, we had 2,308 planning applications received and 330 new co-complaints received, compared to 2206 for the previous year and 340 co-complaints complaints. Building permits for the month of May, we had 41 single-family residents, which was a slight decrease of 4 over the previous month. Multi-family, we had one, which was two less than the previous month. Total permits, all categories, was 262, which was an increase of 32 over the previous month. And total inspections were 511, which were 39 more than the last month. For the month of June, we had 30, which was a decrease of 11 over May. Multi-family, we had also just one, so it's flat. Total permits, all categories, 262, which was a slight decrease over May. And total inspections were 502, which was a decrease of nine. Since July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022, there were 491 single-family residence permits issued, compared to 486 for the year prior. Total permits, all categories, since July 1st, there were 2,662, compared to 2,553 over the year prior. And total inspections, there were 5,266, compared to 5,388 over the previous year. As far as items that have been heard, or I'm sorry, co-complaints, May, we had 29 new complaints, which was a decrease over six from the previous month. Closed, we had 18, which was 11 more than the previous month. June, new complaints, we had 26, which was a decrease of three. And closed, we had 27, which was an increase of nine. Updates on previous items heard by this board, we had zone change application 22-3. It was an application for a conforming zone change to change approximately 82.44 acres from specific plan to 74.03 acres of rural homestead RH 4.5 and 8.41 acres of general commercial located on a property located at 4,500 North Black Road. This item was heard by this board on the April 13th agenda and was recommended for approval to the B O C C. The B O C C heard the item on the 622 agenda and it was approved. Zone change and master plan amendment 22-1 was an application for a conforming zone change to change one parcel totaling approximately 4.844 acres from village residential VR 20 to rural homestead RH 4.5 located at 401 West Bonark Road. This item was heard by this board on the 39 agenda and was recommended for approval to the B O C C. The item was heard by the B O C C on the 622 agenda and was also approved. Zone change master plan amendment 22-5, an application for conforming zone change to change one parcel totaling approximately 1.1 acres from neighborhood commercial to general commercial on a property located at 3760 East Alfalfa Street. This item was heard by this board on the 511 agenda and was recommended for approval. This item was then heard by the B O C C on the 622 agenda and was also approved. And zone change master plan amendment 22-7, an application for a conforming zone change to change one parcel totaling approximately 0.78 acres from light industrial to general commercial located at 340 South Emery Street. This item was also heard by this board on 511 agenda and recommended for approval. It was then heard by the B O C C on 622 agenda and was also approved. And that completes my report.
Thank you very much, Director Wagner. With that, we will move into our regular agenda, taking item 11. Bill draft number 2022-06, Nye County ordinance draft, so no number. And folks, we're going to hear a report from staff first, so you don't necessarily need to line up. You're welcome to stand as well.
Just get ready.
Just want everybody to be comfortable.
I'll do the summary and then let you guys take it from there. Summary is a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Title 17, Comprehensive Land Use Planning and Zoning, Section 1704240, by allowing for the keeping of chickens under specific conditions on village residential VR 20's own parcels of land, 20,000 square feet or larger, and providing for the severability, constitutionality, and effective date thereof, and other matters properly relating thereto. So, staff?
Good evening again. First of all, before we get into this item, we do have some comment letters that were received to the planning department, as well as a clearer draft version. The draft that was posted in the agenda didn't indicate what the changes were versus what wasn't being changed, that we would like to submit for backup, if the board desires.
Board?
I move that we allow backup to be submitted.
I will second.
Take the motion. We have a motion and a second, so I just need a vote now. Commissioner Blackstock?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We'll take the amended draft. Are there copies for the public? Excellent. the public? Excellent. Now, now that we have all of our copies, thank you very much, staff. Now, you guys can, can get yours while staff tells us what is in the draft. And then we have our copies, so we can look at them. So now they can tell us what is in it while you get your copies.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Hold on a moment. If you guys will calm down, staff has to tell you what is in this ordinance. They're going to read it to you. So even if you did not get a copy, then they're going to explain it. And so everyone will know what we're discussing. So be patient, give them a moment so that they can tell us what is in this draft. Thank you. Staff?
Thank you, Chair. So the copies that were provided, we provided 50, correct, Celeste? Forty-five, that's all we, that's, they're posted online. There's nothing that changed in the draft. The only thing that's changed is that the drafts that you have now been given show the changes in blue font, but they can follow along, so. But, but I'm going to ask, it's very important that people listen to what I have to say and please stop with the outburst because there's a a lot of miscommunication that's been going on, on Facebook and I'm sure out in the audience that I would like to try to clear up and save folks a lot of time this evening. So I please ask that people let me say what I need to say before we start into the comments.
And I, I'm going to add to that, that I think, as I saw some of what was posted, and I think there's a huge misconception on everyone's part. Please listen to what staff has to say. And then the, then us as commissioners, we are going to ask our questions of staff before I open it up to public comment. So please pay attention to what we're going to share with you. Thank you. Commissioner Wagner? Or I'm sorry, Director Wagner?
So, as, as you guys know, through previous items you've had before this board, where we've had instances where complaints have been submitted for chickens in backyards in VR 20 zoned areas, which currently today does not allow any type of livestock whatsoever. And it's been written that way since it was adopted in 2004. What staff was, has done with the request from this board was come up with a draft that would actually now allow chickens in VR 20 zoned property. VR 20 zoned property is half acre lots typically. There are some larger parcels that are zoned VR 20, where even those with that zoning do not allow chickens, even if they're an acre or 10 acres or 15 acres due to that zoning. So what this bill draft you've got before you does is we have actually written in provisions to actually allow chickens where chickens today are not allowed at all. We did a lot of research through other municipalities trying to find you know, pick and choose pieces that we felt would fit in this community because not everybody wants chickens next door. So we've tried to come up with a draft that would allow chickens with some guidelines that hopefully everybody would be amicable with. Obviously, not everybody wants chickens next door when they live in a VR 20 property, otherwise we wouldn't get complaints about them. But we're trying to come up with a draft that obviously would not only allow them, but that people could live with and be happy with on both sides of that equation. So in our VR 20 code, which this draft only applies to VR 20. It does not apply to VR 10, VR 8, RH, or REs, where REs and RH properties today, livestock, everything's allowed. Our VR 8s and VR 10 properties are generally in subdivision settings that have HOAs and CC and Rs that prohibit any kind of livestock in there anyway. So on page two of the draft, underneath the minimum building setbacks, we did add some setbacks in there under accessory buildings. I know there's some argument on is a chicken coop an accessory building or is it not? Well, it kind of depends on how it's built. If it's permanently affixed to the ground on a concrete slab and stick-built, it would be considered an accessory building because maybe the next person that owns that property isn't going to have chickens and they want to just turn it into a storage shed. A storage shed today would require minimum setbacks and a zoning review. So that is why we did try to put some parameters in there. And again, considering the fact that some neighbors don't like chickens next door to their house. And, you know, we tried to put a little bit more of a buffer than we would put for a pump house or a storage shed just to try to make it more amicable for the neighbor that doesn't want anything to do with chickens. So that is why we had suggested 10 feet over our typical five-foot setback for an accessory building. Then you'll see on number two underneath there, front loading garages, or that shouldn't be. We added line number four, chicken, chicken coops shall be constructed 10 feet from all rear side property lines. So that's just a minimum setback we had suggested. In section D, this is everything in blue, but for those of you that don't have a copy that shows the blue, third paragraph down, that starts with keeping of chickens under the following conditions. This is an entire new section that we have proposed as our amendment to this code. And it has to do with chickens. Keeping of chickens under the following conditions, the keeping of chickens for subsistence farming or pets shall be restricted to lots that are a minimum lot size of 20,000 gross square feet in size. Again, VR 20 is half acres or larger. They're .46 net typically because of the street right-ofways and stuff and easements that come along with them. That's why we wrote it at 20,000 square feet gross because that is where they started at. No more than 10 chickens, chicken hens shall be allowed on each lot. No roosters shall be permitted. The reason the no roosters shall be permitted, because again, we're in a zoning, an area that are smaller lots. They're village residential lots is what they're called. With roosters and fertilizing of eggs, population control could be challenging. And we don't want to get into having to enforce that constantly when somebody ends up with 13 chickens when they're only supposed to have 10 or 40. I mean, we've seen it in other instances. And again, audience, if you guys can please keep it down for a minute. Population control is a concern on these smaller lots. And again, we're trying to come up with a code amendment that's amicable for everybody. So that is where the no roosters has come in. Also, there is places that do, some of the codes that we did review, where they allow roosters, but they require that their vocal cords are clipped or whatever. And, you know, I'm not a proponent of that. So, but when you're, you know, 10 foot away from your neighbor, because their house could be five foot away from that fence, that property line, they don't necessarily, might not want to hear a rooster crowing at 4:30 in the morning like I do in my.
Come on, people.
Audience, please. Let them have their say. You will get your say. He's bringing up legitimate points. He's not saying this is his opinion. These are legitimate things that we have seen come before us. Be quiet and listen, please. Show a little respect and decorum. Thank you.
So again, that's where the rooster thing it came from. Chicken coops shall be restricted to rear area of the lot and meet the required setbacks for accessory structures. A zoning review is required prior to construction. No person shall be permitted to self-poultry eggs or engage in commercial farming. Persons or property engaged in commercial keeping of chickens are exempt, are not exempt from nuisance ordinances. So in VR 20 and RE 1, RH 4.5, RH 9.5, all of our zoning districts, commercial operations are prohibited with the exception of like a home-based business. In the research that we've done, to commercially sell eggs in the first place, there are requirements from the Department of Ag. They've got to be of a certain quality. Doesn't say people can't give eggs to their neighbors, give eggs to their family, anybody else. What you do with your eggs is fine. We just don't want the disruption or to promote the disruption of the neighborhood by having a commercial operation in the neighborhood. Why would somebody be allowed to have a egg-selling business when you can't sell cars, you can't, you know, you, you can't sell other goods out of your home other than like in a yard sale type setting? So that's some of the history of the research and stuff that we've done. I'm honestly quite surprised at the trying to think of a nice way to put it, but all of the chatter on Facebook and the misunderstanding. I understand that not everybody knows what zoning they live in and that's perfectly understandable. So I understand that people were feared that, oh my gosh, they're doing that county or a prump wide ordinance and now I won't be able to have my chickens anymore on my little farm that I, you know, live on an acre or whatever. And that isn't it at all, you know. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to try to give some explanation to this. I know you folks understand it. I know there is a lot of folks that understand it. There has been some comments like that as well. But this is actually an ordinance that is trying to lessen restrictions that are there. Without this ordinance, you don't have chickens today legally. If we get a co-complaints complaint today, we have to address it because chickens are not allowed. So that's where we're at.
Well, and before I turn it over to questions from the board, I would like to add to that that I know of several instances where homeowners who had chickens but lived in VR 20 have been before us because of a code complaint. And we had no, no method, nothing that would allow us to let them keep their chickens. And that was a shame. And that's why we directed you guys to please help us build something that will protect those homeowners who would like to have a few chickens in their yard. I mean, the one gentleman broke my heart when he was talking about them as his pets and that they were kind of therapy animals for him. But we had nothing that would allow that. So I'm, I want to say that I'm very appreciative that you've worked so hard to create this bill draft. And now I'll turn it over to the commissioners for questions of staff.
Okay, so just so I can clarify for myself and everyone out here. We had received numerous complaints on various properties of people having chickens in a VR 20 zoned. And there was no way that by our ordinances in black and white that we could allow those people to keep the chickens. So we came up with this idea. Right now, this is in draft form, correct?
It is in draft.
So we're not taking a vote on it tonight, right?
This isn't something that you guys would vote on.
Or that to pass on to?
No.
Okay, just.
This is just discussion.
Discussion? So with the form that it's in now, what would be a good assistance to us as a board and understanding everyone there is when you do have your comments to recommend little, or suggest little changes in it, how it sits, remember this is adding the ability to have chickens, not taking anything away but to the VR 20s, especially if you're one affected by it on the VR 20. If something works, please let us know. If something doesn't work, we've got to find a happy medium. But there are just as many with chickens than without, and we have to find a happy medium. We did this to help out the community. It was nothing taken, only given. And that's what we want to keep doing, making you guys as happy as we can. So please, give us your suggestions and know that we're on your side. We are here for you guys, but we are bound by what's in black and white here. So help us change it for the best for everyone.
Commissioner Skinner?
Thank you and through you, Chair. Number one, I just want to thank staff for all the hard work that you guys are doing. I know there's, there's more people behind, behind Director Wagner than just himself who are working on this and probably a lot of hours. And of course, you all went into this knowing this was going to be a little bit of a touchy subject for a lot of prumpians because that's kind of a part of the, the chicken thing's kind of a part of the prump culture in a way. And many of us here, we all, well, we own chickens. And so this is, this is important. But my first question I'm going to ask, and maybe if I can ask too, and then I can, you know, we can maybe go to the bottom of the list. But is this applicable to, so I noticed just in the, the way the language is written, it says in number four, chicken coops shall be constructed 10 feet and it goes on. But in the minimum building setbacks, what we're doing is we're identifying accessory buildings. And I'm wondering, are we talking about accessory building chicken coops? Or are we talking about structures that house chickens that may not be accessory buildings?
It would be more structures that house chickens. And again, that comes with trying to not impede on the other, on your neighbors' rights that don't want chickens.
And through you, Chair, if I could just make a, just a recommendation just to further define that, just so there's some more clarity there, if you don't mind taking that back out, that would be appreciated, appreciated. The other thing that strikes me and stands out to me is in section D, number one. The keeping of chickens for subsistence farming or pets shall be restricted to lots that are a minimum lot size of, lot size of 20,000. My concern there is that we might be muddying the waters a bit because we're speaking to other zoning applications. So we're, we're speaking to, you know, VR 10 or, you know, any other things when we're, when we're using that language. I wonder if we can clear that language up a bit so that it could be speaking only to VR 20 and not making reference to other, other categories, if that's possible.
Well, I, I don't see that it does because this is a code amendment that's not going to reside in any other zoning district. It is specifically for the VR 20 zone. So it's, again, you know, we, we have lots that are, you know, 50 acres, 15 acres that are zoned VR 20. that are zoned VR twenty. So we're making it specific to the VR twenty classification. So I don't really know how I would clarify it, or, I mean, because if somebody came in with a VR eight zoned property that was four acres, it still would not allow it, because that's not allowed in that zoning district, if that makes more sense.
If I may, when, when these are pulled, they're all separated out, so that verbiage, like it's not in a generalized section, it's in a section that's titled VR twenty. As you go down through it, you get to the next session completely different, with completely different setbacks, if that helps.
For me, I, I don't think that does help. But, I mean, we're not going to solve, we don't need to solve every problem tonight in this very meeting at this very moment. So, I mean, you want to, and I understand that, I get it. But it's just, it's something to consider and maybe give some thought about. I just, what I, what I don't want to do, and maybe I'm having a misunderstanding, and I apologize if I am, but I, I don't want to muddy the waters by speaking to any other category. I want to make sure that we're speaking very clearly. For instance, the way that it speaks, it's restricted to lots that are minimum lot size of twenty thousand. So I, I don't know, maybe that we could find some language. I don't know what it is either.
I'll give it some thought. But again, the only section of code is VR twenty. We don't have any parcels in, in the Perump Regional Planning District that are less than twenty thousand gross feet that are zoned VR twenty.
That does clarify. Thank you.
Are you referring to like, shall be restricted to lots that are VR twenty and a minimum lot size of twenty thousand? Is that the type of clarification we're looking for?
Correct, correct. So, so, um, so for instance, I guess, the problem is that it's, it's limiting to twenty thousand square foot. What if you own a property that's ten thousand square foot? I, I don't know.
It wouldn't be VR twenty. It would not be VR twenty zoning. It would be VR eight or VR ten.
Okay, so in that category, then, we would have something that speaks to chickens as well?
No, we don't.
We don't?
Right, right now, they...
Oh, we might in the future.
Well, possibly, but that, not through this draft at all, no.
And to, to clarify a little bit, since staff was working under our direction to try to solve a problem that we had noticed in the community, every one of these that has come across our desk has been in VR twenty. It's not in other larger zoning, it's not in the very tiny lots. It's someone that has a half an acre or a little bit more that happens to be zoned VR twenty, and we have to tell them, no, it's not allowed. So we're trying to find a way to be able to tell them, yes, it is allowed. And yet, also be very respectful of the people who turned in those code complaints in the first place, because the county doesn't go around looking for backyard chickens. Your neighbors turn you in. So this is to try to, to solve both sides of that equation and make it equitable for everyone, so.
Correct.
Any, any more questions of staff? Okay.
Thank you, through you, Chair. So Director Wagner, I'm just wondering if you could provide some clarity about the commercial application. How many chickens do you need to own before you become commercial?
We don't, I, I have no idea. You know, we just put a, a limitation of ten, just because, again, that was kind of the consistent number in many areas that have smaller lots that aren't, you know, complete, I mean, we're a rural community, but we have more urban parts of town than we do. I, I mean, we've got quite a mix of everything out here, right? So that was just a number that was kind of a consensus over most of the different ordinances that we've seen were adopted. Boulder City, for instance, they, they have a limit of ten. There, in your backup was an ordinance that was just adopted, I can't remember, Pennsylvania or somewhere, they had, I think, twelve, you know? So it was just kind of an average. There were some that said only eight, so.
Through you, Chair, and I'm sorry to ask so many questions, but I've seen other, in other areas where the commercial application began at a thousand chickens, and in other areas, other jurisdictions, ninety-nine, if you had greater than ninety-nine, then that was a commercial application. So, so, I mean, I think that it's important to have some clarity, especially when, you know, just reading through the comments here, and, you know, there's a lot of folks here who own chickens, they really need to have this nailed down for them, and...
Well, I, I think this does with a limit of ten. I mean, or if it was fifteen.
Well, and, hold on for a moment, and this only applies to VR twenty. So if you have any number of others, other zoning designations, agriculture and livestock is already allowed per code. It's, we're trying to address the areas, the smaller lots where they are not allowed by code. That's the whole goal of this. It's not to fix, it's, it doesn't address anything other than those specific type lots. Director Wagner, do you have any idea approximately how many VR twenty lots we have throughout Perump? A wild guess?
Not really. I mean, there's several. I mean, you know, there's several that need to be honestly fixed. They're, they're incorrectly zoned. But there is no limitation, maybe this answers your question. If you're on an RE property, an RE one, an RE two, RE ones are typically an acre, RE twos, two acres, RH four point five is, you know, five acres, and RH nine point fives, ten acres or larger, there is no limitations at all for chickens. You could have fifteen thousand chickens if, if, you know, for your family or whatever you're doing, and as long as you're not selling them commercially, then you're not a commercial business. We don't have anything in our code anywhere else that triggers it being considered commercial, unless you're, you know, trying to run a business with it.
So in this case, the commercial refers to use of the eggs instead chickens, not the, the number. So like, if you can have fifteen chickens and pump out, you know, I haven't counted how many they, they put down, but let's say three dozen every two days, and, but if you go to sell them in a commercial manner, that's the commercial use they're referring to.
Well, and that's actually overseen by the Department of Agriculture.
And that goes into, yeah, a whole different beast.
It is. But again, in, in, for even home-based businesses, for, you've got to remember, this is residentially zoned property. Even a home-based business doesn't allow for public to come and do business at your home, because it's disruptive. I mean, home-based business, you're not supposed to disturb the residential character of the neighborhood. So you don't want a bunch of signs saying eggs for sale, you know, up and down the street. But again, like the gentleman you had referred to earlier, he had mentioned that he takes eggs and gives them to his, you know, neighbors, his adjacent neighbors, you know? But obviously, one neighbor wasn't interested in the eggs because they complained about him, so.
This is true. So, any other, okay.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, because I know with some families, you know, having chickens is kind of like having a lemonade stand, you know? So they, they do take those chick, those eggs, and they do sell them, and, and they make a few dollars, not, I just want to clarify for the public that that's not what this is about.
No, no.
That's what I want to make.
Not at all. Nope. You can take them to farmer's market or whatever. However you want to get rid of your eggs, it's fine. We just don't want you running a business out of your home selling eggs on VR twenty.
VR twenty.
Yeah.
I do have one more question. This is the last one, I promise. So, okay, so...
Don't invite this guy.
Hey, not, you regret it now, don't you?
I do want to move on to...
I still got some money on them, all right? Here we go, come on.
I promise this is my last one, but it's an important one to ask, because I, it keeps, it's recurring, and, you know, seeing the public comment is recurring. So why no roosters when we have a nuisance law? That's gonna, that's, that's a question I, I have.
It's more about the reproductive, the reproductive part of the equation, in, in order to try to have a little bit of, I don't want to use the word control, but to try to keep it at a manageable limit, that's where that comes in, because without a rooster, right, the eggs are unfertilized, so.
So that, that would be, if that's something that's stirring the pot, that would be something they could suggest during their time as an amendment, since we're discussing the draft of it?
Sure.
If they, if they, if it was a problem that they're concerned about?
Right.
Something we can collect and take under consideration.
My only thing I would love, I, I want to remind the audience, is I'm guessing that a majority of folks here are not living on VR twenty property, and it just has nothing to do with any other zoning, so.
All right, with that, I'm going to open public comment. Remember to state your name and spell your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, I'm back again. My name is Laura Larson, L-A-R-S-C-N. In that section D that you're talking about, okay, I understand regarding the fact that the V twenty into that, but wouldn't that also sit there and go towards the HOA regarding the fact of they're putting their limitations instead of bringing it here? That should be going to the HOA, because I know I used to be a member of an HOA. And granted, it was in Vegas, however, and it was actually a very small area of a community. So regarding the fact of that, I think I should actually put that out there in addition. I know you're trying to help the community, I understand regarding the fact of allowing them to have chickens. However, how can you say that you can't have a rooster and you know that you're going to sit there and have ten chickens? Okay? You can't sit there and, without having, it's kind of like a man can't have a baby without a woman, you know? I mean, it's the same concept. You don't know how many chickens, because I had sixteen at one point when I didn't, I thought I was only going to have eight. Okay? And I ended up having two, two roosters, because you don't know if they're going to be a male or a female until they grow up. Okay? So you can't limit regarding the fact that, okay, we're not going to sit there and have roosters anymore. Well, you can't, you can't say that. If they want to sit there and put it in their HOA, that's totally different. That has nothing to do with regarding the fact of this board and regarding the fact of zoning. I understand you're trying to help the community to open things up for people to sit there and be able to have that, but you can't limit regarding the fact of certain areas. I understand you have to limit regarding the fact of the small communities. I get it. But also, in the same token, you can't sit there and put a limit regarding the fact of how many chickens you're going to sit there and have, because you don't know, and then you'd also don't know what sex they're going to be. So you've got to sit there and break it down into a, it shouldn't be like black and white, this and that. You've got to have some areas. And regarding the fact of, I understand you don't want to sit there and put it into a business sense of it regarding the fact of people doing it out of their homes in a V twenty section. However, people should be able to sit there and do whatever the heck we want. We live in the Constitution of the United States of America. Okay? We should be allowed to be able to do whatever we want on our properties since we bought out here. Okay? Nobody should be coming and telling me, it's kind of like me telling any of you, any of you, this is how many children you can have in your household. We are not China. Okay? We are not Japan.
Ms. Larson?
That limits how many people can they consider and have.
Ms. Larson, your three minutes are up.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, you guys need to go a little bit deeper regarding the fact of that and listen to what we're saying.
And, Ms. Larson, we're addressing places that do not have HOAs for the record. However, your three minutes are up. The next gentleman, please.
Hello, my name is Pat Kirby, spelled K-E-R-B-Y, and I appreciate your attempts to let people in those smaller communities have chickens. The things that concern me, it was nice to hear you saying that it was okay for them to go and sell them at farmer's markets, because we can't tell the future, but it looks like food shortages are coming. And the, I would like to see leadership in rural communities go the other way and work towards nullifying any laws that prohibit the growing and selling of food locally. Everyone should plant a garden. Everyone should get chickens. In six months, a rooster crowing at your next, next door neighbor's house may be the best sound you ever heard. So that's one of the things I want to say. And also, we're, we're always worried about mission creep. When we see something like this, we're always worried that saying, okay, what's not written here is, we've got to ask permission of a bureaucrat what we can build on our own property. And that has a way of expanding.
Excuse me one moment, sir. Folks, the applause is disruptive and not to your advantage. Please let them have their comments. We...
Guys, are eating up my three minutes?
Yes. Please let them have their comments.
Right. So that's, that's always the concern when we see something like this, of the best of intentions. In a year, it's expanding to, well, somebody complained about somebody who has an acre and a half, and, and then it, then it goes on from there. And the, the idea that we can limit someone's rights to try to, to offset food shortages, upcoming food shortages in order to feed their family because they bought a smaller acreage is not an American ideal. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Amy Nelson, N-E-L-S-O-N. The first thing I want to address is the definition of a VR twenty village residential. And by the way, in the staff's report, there was an item mentioned that VR twenty zone was changed to another zone. It might be too complicated, but why not change the VR twenty zones instead of putting all this in? But a definition of where a VR twenty zone...
Another thirty minutes.
I'm sorry?
What?
Okay. A lower-density residential uses in a suburban environment. We are not a suburban environment. The minimum lot size in a VR twenty zone is twenty thousand square feet. The VR twenty zone is appropriate where suburban characteristics are desired and full public services are available. And once again, we are not a suburban community. The other five items that are listed under section D that outlines the keeping of chickens and the following conditions, it says in number five, no person shall be committed or permitted to sell poultry, eggs, or engage in commercial farming. So this conversation about what is commercial farming is addressed in that paragraph, and it will even limit a person with ten eggs from selling eggs or using eggs as sustenance for their family. Persons or property engaged in keeping of chickens are not exempt from noise ordinances, and I am assuming that that is because of the roosters. Anyway, I'm not for this ordinance because of the restrictions or non-restrictions. I think there's other ways that people that have these issues on a VR twenty zone, where the zone could be changed and not all of these additions with restrictions, because no matter how you look at it, these are restrictions, whether you add two hundred chickens with restrictions or ten chickens with restrictions, they're restrictions. And so I think maybe the, you might go back and look at this and change the actual VR twenty zone rather than everything else in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I want to speak. My name is Dwight Lilloy. Walt, your mom sold me my house. And when I had discussions with her, I was up in the state of Washington, we did everything through the internet, and I explained to her that I had grown up in a rural area, I'd been raised in Seattle after that, and had spent most of my life in a city environment, and that I wanted to go to a rural environment. and that I wanted to go to a rural environment. And she says, well, Perump is the place to go. So I moved here, a town that has a Wild West festival put on by the sheriff right over here. I see horses wandering up and down the streets. Nobody's telling the horses they can't have a male horse out there. Now, this, I have chickens that I raised from scratch, literally babies. And I have a rooster. I have no intention of getting rid of my rooster because that's like, why have chickens if you have to go buy chickens to replace chickens that they die? Because unfortunately, some of them do die, they just do. And so I was very concerned when I saw this item come up. And I'm glad our planning director brought this up because I heard you all say that, well, if people have complained. I'd like to see who these faceless people that are complaining, because I think I'm the fifth person, fourth to fifth person, and I've yet to see somebody come up and say, Dwight, we don't like you having chickens. We don't like the smell of them. We don't like your rooster. Because I consider I live in rural Nevada. I don't want the spread of Los Angeles, Seattle, Portland, New York to come here and tell us here in Perump. We're on the, we're on the edge of a county that goes for hundreds of miles that we can't have livestock, that we can't grow gardens, that we can't have chickens, that we can't raise rabbits, whatever we want. Now, especially with the food prices, what they are, a lot of people use their chickens for meat and for eggs. Now, that might make somebody squeamish from the city that, oh, my God, they cut that chicken's head off. Well, that's how I was raised, slaughtering rabbits and chickens. My whole family was that way. We caught croods down the river and sold them to a guy down the road for 25 cents a dozen. You come here with a planning item that had to have been driven by either one of the elected officials here or you say complaints. I say to the complainers, where are you? Where's the people that want me or anybody else in this town to be restricted to have chickens? I haven't seen one come forward. Who are these faceless people? What's driving this agenda? And what is driving, like one gentleman said, us to lose our rights on our properties? When we moved here for the distinct purpose of living rural. So I say, my suggestion is people have 30 chickens should be okay and roosters should be okay. And the State Agricultural Department allows you to get a permit to sell your goods that you raise.
Mr. Lilly, your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Was that my three minutes?
That is your three minutes.
Thank you very much for having me here. I hope you put some good thoughts to this and come out with something for rural people rather than Los Angeles.
My name is Micah Wittenborn, W I T T E N B O R N. I am one that has a judgment against me to get rid of my chickens because I am in a VR 20 zone. You should not feel bad at all in any way for the decision. I kept my chickens. I didn't get rid of them. I don't plan on it. The only other comment I have on the, the rooster thing is we're talking about the sale of eggs and we're talking about roosters and reproduction. For the reproduction, you have to keep the eggs. If you're not keeping the eggs and you're eating the eggs, why do we got to get rid of the rooster? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine McLeRoy. That's M C capital L E R O Y. And I don't live in a V 20, but I have some good feedback. We're in a low density, really, population here. But if you look at Santa Monica, California, they're high density. They have small lots. They have multiple buildings with people who have chickens. I went to this multi-level apartment that they had like three levels. It wasn't really a townhouse. But on top, they each had their little penthouse and they could have their chickens up there. They have a limit of 13 and roosters are okay. And that's right next door to LA City, right on the beach or, you know, Santa Monica, high scale end. So if they can have 13 in a small area, I feel that people here could have the right of having small lots of chickens here if they're well managed. And like the gentleman had said, that if you keep the eggs and let them set, they will reproduce. But if you gather them every day, you won't have that problem. And there are some breeds that do not set at all. They're just high producer of eggs. They have no desire to have babies. And there are some that are more apt to that. But that's something to think about. Thank you very much.
Hi, I am Kimberly Yele, Y E L L E. I am actually kind of a rescuer out here. I have many, many disabled chickens. I have a blind cross feet girl that literally feeds herself and waters herself, finds her own way. Chickens, you know, a lot of people use them for farming and stuff like that. And that's fine, and I'm all for that, too. And we cannot restrict that. And I get, I'm for the, the bill as in letting them have chickens. However, though, you cannot restrict it. And also, your comment about cutting a rooster's vocal cords. The anatomy of a rooster is to crow when there are signs of danger, when there are, he's calling his females into bed. If you cut the vocal cords of a rooster, you literally kill the rooster. You, you do. You literally take all of his power away. The rooster is meant not only to reproduce, but to protect the flock. I have a little bantam rooster that takes on 13 girls every day and protects them no matter what. Okay? He is also a rescue. He can't walk all that well, but protects my flock. So when you're talking about restrictions and stuff, I do respect the fact that you shouldn't overpopulate the properties. I get that. Rule of thumb, every chicken owner here knows you got to have at least two to four square feet per chicken. That's the rule of thumb. Also, you need one rooster per 10 hens. When you have 10 hens, you have picking, you have fighting, you have deaths. The rooster controls the flock. And I understand the noise ordinance, I do. However, though, when the food shortages, just like the gentleman before me, when the food shortages come and stuff, that's going to be the happiest sound in the world. Because that means those chickens are reproducing eggs, giving us more meat here in Perump where we're pretty much in the middle of nowhere and don't have access to a whole lot of stuff, guys. So I'm just saying, like, I'm not V, I'm not VR 20. But I am here for the rights of everyone on VR 20 to not do the restrictions or lift them up. And by the way, to go commercial, you got to have over 20,000 chickens. Thank you.
Lower it all the way down. Hi, guys. Okay, I'm Cindy Lake, L A K E, Perump, Nevada. I moved here in January of 2021, but I've owned property here since 2010, since the last recession. We're in one now, and it's going to be way worse. So err on the side of allowing people to eat and also private property. I came here for the freedom, not to come here to this meeting and have a limit of 10 chickens on a half acre. In Clark County, if you have a half acre, you could have however many chickens you want. I mean, what, what's the arbitrary 10 and no roosters? Where, I don't understand that. But anyway, I also did find, because I'm a real estate agent, it looks like 5,000 VR 20 zoned properties. Is that about right, you think?
Probably.
About 5,000? How many complaints do you know have there been?
Well, there isn't 5,000 residences on those 5,000 properties.
Right, so what I'm, what I'm wondering is how many complaints have there been? And why now? Why now? I mean, over time, have there been complaints? Over years, have there been complaints? I don't, I, why today? Why during a recession and inflation?
You and I aren't really supposed to.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Anyway, that's, that's all I have to say. Please don't go any further with this. Or if you do go anywhere with it, allow chickens everywhere on private property. Private property.
My name is Carla Reber. I am, that's R E B E R. I'm a field representative with the Nevada Farm Bureau Federation. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Central Nevada Farm Bureau, which includes Perump. After consulting with their membership as well as other producers in the area, the Central Nevada Farm Bureau, the Nevada Farm Bureau Federation would like to express their concerns over this proposal. We believe individuals have the right to farm. We believe that in the face of rising inflation, supply chain disruption, and excessive state regulation of Nevada's egg market, that this right is more important now than ever before. As the county moves, as the country moves in a direction that seeks to decentralize its food supply chains and produce food more sustainably and locally, we believe individuals and families should be afforded the option to participate in that movement. These proposals seem to move away from that goal and reduce, and if not eliminate, a person's right to farm and produce food. Another concern raised by members in interviews conducted via Zoom and interviews conducted via, and a Zoom meeting on July 10th was over the ban on roosters and how this would affect those who wish to raise meat birds. It doesn't appear like this aspect was considered by the drafters with this proposal. Another concern was the limit of 10 birds and that for, that for raising meat birds, this was too small of a number. Others voiced concerns that with only 10 birds, that wouldn't produce enough eggs to feed most families. Individuals also voiced concern that this proposal doesn't take, doesn't take into account other types of poultry. Another concern was the ban on selling poultry, eggs, or engaging in commercial farming. Considering how this is written, it could be construed to even prohibit selling produce at a local farmer's market. Again, we believe more individuals should be encouraged to participate in small-scale agriculture. We also feel that if someone goes through the correct steps to obtain an egg handler's certification or a producer's certificate from the Nevada Department of Agriculture, they should be allowed to sell their eggs and their produce. It's also worth pointing out that the Department of Ag and in conjunction with the Nevada Farm Bureau have rolled out the Herds and Harvest Program, which provides training and courses on how to be productive and manage small acre farms effectively. After a meeting with our members and other producers, a statement expressed by many was that what makes Perump great is that it's not Vegas and that they have the freedom to have animals guard into homestead. I don't want that taken from them or others in the future. Nevada Farm Bureau Policy 188 reads in part as follows. "We encourage cooperation between farmers and ranchers and the non-agricultural public in resolving conflicts that occur over agricultural practices like burning or the involved concerns of dust, odors, noise. Necessary agricultural practices should be considered in weighing agricultural and urban disputes."
Ms. Reber, your three minutes are up, sir.
Sorry.
Ted, was there a, did you say it was a, from a document?
Yes, it's from the Nevada Farm Bureau Policy Book.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Diana Stegeman, S T E G E M A N. In 1918, and again in the 1940s, the US government gave away two chickens to every household. They started a campaign that they wanted every American to learn how to take care of themselves and have their own food because we were experiencing food shortages. We went through World War, went through another World War, we had a Cold War. They actually considered it a fun experiment for every family. They wanted you to teach your children how to take care of a pet, how to respect where their food was coming from, and to be able to sustain yourself for a few days. If you couldn't get to a store, you couldn't get food, you couldn't get water, you couldn't get to a food bank. This happened again to us when COVID hit. A lot of our elders couldn't get to Vegas to get the supplies they needed. I have chickens. I took the eggs from my chickens that I wasn't using for my family and I was able to trade the ladies at the farmer's market for bread. I was able to go into town and get them yeast and have them make some things because I couldn't get anything from my family. We were trying. It's very frustrating because I'm one of the people that is offensive to ordinance because I have chickens in a place that I'm not supposed to. When I purchased my home, I used a USDA loan and I was rural estates. However, the zoning changed two weeks later before I ever moved in. But I had my chickens. They came with me. And so I've been reported about every six months, a little bit more when I started putting 12-foot skeletons in the yard. But anyways, I get reported a whole lot. When the pandemic hit, I took those same neighbors that kept reporting me eggs. I took them corn from my garden. I took them tomatoes. I took them stuff I had frozen so they could keep. And I was trying to be laborly. I didn't hear one complaint from them then. It's very disheartening when there is a good possibility we're not going to be able to get food. I was in the military. I've been to a lot of deployed locations. I can tell you what war looks like and just not being able to get the basic necessities for your family. Chickens just become a way of life. My chickens live in the Taj Mahal of a pen. They get, they have a mister, automatic feeders, the door's closed. I have one rooster. Anybody that regularly raises chickens will tell you they don't have more than one rooster because then they fight, then you have all these issues. You just have one. That one is dedicated to your flock. I do not know any coyotes, bobcats, or hawks that know where the zoning lines are. I will tell you they'll run through a neighborhood and your 10 chickens will be completely decimated in a matter of seconds. A neighbor very close to me came out to a bobcat in her pen and actually sent me a text message to get my butt over there and help her. These things happen when you live in the rural. We can't control the elements. But that rooster is vital because the minute he starts going to town and screaming his head off at a time he shouldn't be, you know there's something going on in your yard to go check your food supply. And that's usually as quick as it is and all it takes. Now, I do carry about 20 sometimes because you lose chickens the minute the heat hits. You lose about five at a time. And right now, we're 170 degrees. They just get old. They can't handle living anymore. And so then that 10 quickly gets reduced and you have to start over because it takes 16 weeks before most types of chickens can lay an egg. So that 16 weeks, you're not collecting an egg and you're trying to get them big enough to eat.
Ms. Stegeman, your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Karen Svetkovitch, C V J E T K O V I C H. Some concerns I have about any restrictions, and I think everyone in this room, are first of all, if you place restrictions on VR 20, will you then change the zoning of other zones to be VR 20 and then have restrictions on places that there are not currently restrictions? Second, when requiring a permit, people that don't have a lot of money, will now, will they be required to come up with money to get a permit to build a chicken coop? Whereas, this is only going to help people who have money. If you don't have money, you can't afford a coop. Now, your chickens don't have a place to live. Laying hens only lay for about four years. Are you suggesting that after their four years, they be killed? They've become pets after four years. 10 hens does not allow for a chicken to stop laying and still be left humanely alive. That's just not, what do you do with the old chickens? What do you all suggest? They just, sorry, you got to go. And everyone in this room that has chickens knows you will get an accidental rooster. Everybody gets an accidental rooster. And you already have noise loss concerning that. All of these things can already be taken care of with ordinances that are already there. Any restrictions you are putting on these are just going to hurt people. There are noise ordinances. There are neglect ordinances. They're already there. So no restrictions. Roosters should be allowed, and hens don't lay forever. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Nicholas Svetkovitch, C V J E T K O V I C H. Sorry, I'm not a midget like my wife. Same last name, if you want me to repeat it and spell it, I will. I believe and I agree with every single point of every single person that came here, so I'm not going to be redundant. I'm going to tell you a slightly different story. I'm a former WWE wrestler. I am a wrestling coach. I have world traveled. I lived in Las Vegas, and now I think Perump is wonderful. And I think it is a magical place where you could have dogs, cats, chickens, horses, goats, what have you. You can't do that in Las Vegas and you can't do that in any other city that I've ever lived in. So I would like to say during the pandemic, when my wrestling career was robbed, just like I'm sure a lot of these good people's careers and jobs were robbed because of the pandemic, and I couldn't travel. Now, let me, let me rewind. When I could travel, I knew there was a rooster at home, there was a big dog at home, somebody would bark if people got too close to my home and my wife and my daughter were left alone because I was on the road. Now, fast forward to the pandemic. My daughter was crying all the time. She missed her friends. She was trapped in her home, and we have a nice big home. And it was still a little rat trap compared to what she could be, where she could be, who she could be with. So we got her two chickens as little pets. Soon, they brooded and our. Soon, they brooded and our neighbor gave us fertilized eggs. And next thing you know, we were neck deep in chickens and it was the greatest mistake we ever made. One of those chickens happened to be a rooster. He is now internet famous, so if you want to have him destroyed, that will not be good for you. And I promise you, my Twitter following is bigger than the population of this town, let alone my TikTok and my Instagram and so forth. I would much rather give you guys a great, a great review and as opposed to a negative. So I'm here to be positive and I'm here to let you know there's a lot of strong people in your community. And those chickens kept my daughter happy. If you don't want to see a pet keep your child happy, keep yourself happy, keep your neighbor happy, then I don't know what to tell you about your humanity. We have a one-eyed cat that was hit by a car, we rescued her. We have a puppy that was raised from a coma because some asshole threw her against a wall and put her in a coma at six weeks. And we raised her and she is a wonderful little dog. The one rooster we had, Harvey Snoots is his name. He is a pet and I love him just like my one-eyed cat and my screwy little dog, okay? That rooster was born with vitamin deficiency. There was 14, 14 girls and one boy, and the boy had it rough and we didn't think he was going to make it. And my little, very loving, very angry wife helped figure out how to raise that chicken from the brink and she put the little Forrest Gump knee braces on this thing because he was running around like Kermit the Frog throwing a temper tantrum. It was awful and I didn't think he was going to make it and she figured out how to save him. We raised him, he slept in a cat carrier in our bed for months until we got to put him out with the other chickens. And eventually, just like Forrest Gump, he kicked off those knee braces and now he is the proud papa of a whole flock of chickens. And we couldn't do that if somebody came along and tried to take my chicken, which again, to be friendly and not confrontational, but I dare somebody to kind of take my chicken.
And sir, your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. My name is Paul Benoux, B-E-N-U-X, my last name. I've lived in Perump since 2003, but I want to hit this from a little bit different angle. I've been a victim of creeping incrementalism. In the 1980s, I worked on a dairy in Chino, California. I was a manager of 1,500 head and we produced 5,000 gallons of milk a day. And it was a seven years of really hard work, 16 hours a day, seven days a week, but I raised all kinds of livestock. But as the apartments moved in, as the houses moved in, now all of a sudden the cows smelled, so the cows had to leave. And so the dairies went out of business. I lost my job. So I moved up to the high desert of California, Hesperia, Oak Hills area, two and a half acres. I had two and a half acres, my little homestead, I had my horses, I had my goats, I had chickens, everything you want on a little ranch. It was neat. After 18 years though, all the houses moved in around me, I couldn't even ride my horse anymore. So I moved to Perump. I'm not moving again. I've reached the end of the line. And so I have chickens, I have other animals as well, but the idea is, I came to Perump. I looked in Las Vegas, I looked out there on the other side in some of those areas in Mesquite and stuff like that, but I moved my business out here, which I'm now retired from. But I bought this little one-acre place out here and I have chickens and I have a garden. And my wife and I make $2,000 a month on social security. It's not a lot of money. So my birds give me meat and they give me eggs and my garden gives me vegetables and I have such an abundance, I give away enough for five families. So please, don't let creeping incrementalism destroy the ruralness of Perump. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Pearl, P-E-A-R-L. Sorry, I got nervous, I forgot how to spell my own name. So I'm not going to pretend to, you know, know a lot of what's going on. I've lived in Perump for a year this month and I moved from the San Francisco Bay Area and good riddance to that god-awful place because this is, this is home for me. And I've always, always, always loved to be in a rural place where there's not a ton of people. I don't like living on top of people, I don't like people living on top of me. It sucks I have someone living next door to me, but he's cool, so you know, it's, point being, if these little ordinances start taking root, you know, in VR20s, which is, I'm assuming is the little housing areas that we have, eventually it's going to get bigger. And I really liked what the gentleman just before me said. I want to be able to ride my horse no matter what. And I get so emotional, I'm so sorry. But you know, and it's been a dream of mine to have a horse, it's been a dream of mine to live in a place where I can basically do what I want, not, you know, as long as I'm not hurting other people and being, you know, detrimental to other people. But my point is that if you take these little things and you start implementing, it's going to get bigger and it's going to get bigger and it's going to get bigger. And before you know it, Perump's going to be Vegas. And I didn't move out here to live in the city. I don't want to live in the city and that's why I came to Perump, because Perump is literally in the middle of nowhere. It takes me 50 minutes to get to a city and I hate driving 50 minutes to get to a city, so I don't do it. You know, so I just wanted to speak my opinion or my thoughts because, you know, I want to think that in a rural place, my small voice can matter and make a difference. You wouldn't catch me dead in the Bay Area coming to a commissioner's meeting to speak anything because, well, the city's a city. So I appreciate you letting me speak and I just really hope that this doesn't take place. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Heather Birmingham, B-I-R-M-I-N-G-H-A-M. And I'd like to start by thanking you all for clarifying the verbiage of the proposed backyard chicken ordinance. I'm not personally affected by this ordinance, but I am the president and founder of Woman Owned, Woman Led Perump, which is a nonprofit organization aimed at helping our local businesses succeed. Thus, it's my grassroots effort to help improve our local economy. I'd like to bring to the board's attention that since the, since last month's proposed meeting regarding the redefining of the terms large animal, small animal, and the discussion of the number of each that should be allowed on a property, two of our local farms have announced their closure and planned relocation out of state. These two businesses were Poof Dirt Farms and Thunderbird Conservation Farm. Both of these local businesses provided locally and ethically sourced products, services, education, and entertainment for Perump, as well as fostered a sense of community pride through their work and educational events. They are now closed to the public. Both Poof Dirt and Thunderbird have listed among the reasons for their abrupt closures the threat that this board's proposition has posed to the keeping of their animals. I don't know if you're aware, but Thunderbird Conservation Farm works closely with the USDA and other government programs to help preserve some threatened and endangered native species and to educate the public. They were also Perump's only conservation farm and one of only two conservation farms in the state of Nevada. I'm asking the board to please take into consideration the consequences of the proposed backyard chicken ordinance because Perump has already lost two very valuable assets as a result of these discussions being raised and I worry that continued propositions like this will ultimately discourage similar businesses in the same manner and further deteriorate the local economy. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kristin Gray, K-R-I-S-T-I-N-G-R-A-Y. I am not living in VR20, however, I am here because of government overreach and things that occur with that. We all know John Locke, he was an amazing man and he says, "It is a mistake to think that tyranny is proper only to monarchies, that other forms of government are liable to it. For wherever the power that is put in any hands of the government for the people, for the preservation of their properties, it is applied to other ends made of use to impoverish, harass, or subdue them to the arbitrary and irregular commands of those that have the power. There, it presently becomes tyranny, whether those that thus use it are one or many." You asked for help with this. You said, "We've searched all these other towns that have these ordinances and this is what we came up with." Well, I've looked across the entire country at all the ordinances, they're not good. They're just not good. If you want to have freedom for your people and allow them to have chickens, then just simply say poultry shall be allowed and stop. And honestly, the need for permits increases the cost and makes it so that only the wealthy or those who are okay coming into the government, a lot of people don't like the government, they're scared of the government, they don't have a hand to hold to walk through the process, they're not going to do it. And you'll get complaints about this or they just won't be able to provide for their families. And this is taking self-sufficiency away from people and we should be encouraging self-sufficiency. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Worley and I'm here as a private citizen, even though I'm not dressed as one at the moment.
And Sheriff Worley, can you spell your last name for the record?
Did you catch that? Okay. When I first came here, it was 57 years ago, there were 485 people that lived in this valley and a lot of animals, a whole lot of animals and a whole lot of farms. And one by one, they bit the dust because people wanted to buy that, that ranching area, that farming area and build homes. I used to be able to get on my horse and ride from my house, clear down to the end of the valley and maybe open three gates and close them. Now you can't do that. Inch by inch, we're taking away our freedoms. We have a lot of laws already on the books that I think would take care of the things that we're talking about here today. If people are abusing their animals, then we have a law for that. If people are making too much noise, well, we almost have a law for that. But to tell people that you can have chickens on this teen little piece of property when in other places you can have chickens on top of a roof, but you can't have a rooster, so therefore they're not self-sustaining, is just way too much. And I'm sorry, but I just have to say something about that. I don't want to see any more of our freedoms taken away from us when there are other things that are more important than chickens. Thank you.
Wow. Tim Bohannon, B-O-H-A-N-N-O-N, that's an extremely hard act to follow. I like to approach it from this perspective. A little bit of background about me, I was born in a rural community, raised in a rural community. I've lived in larger towns, cities, Columbus, Ohio, Las Vegas, Indianapolis, but rural is the heart of where I'm at. And it's the heart of our project, we'll talk about that later. What, what I want to address is this, I was actually raised in the hog capital of Ohio. Now try the smell with that. And the interesting thing is, when you smell it, it's like, hey, you know, the farmers are saying, hey, that's money. The people are saying, hey, that's a thriving community. You hear our folks, how we love and know the details of the chickens and know them well, including crutches of having and raising them. You know, the farmer's market, which I deal with mainly from Labor Day to Memorial Day, and the selling of eggs, in our case, we'll buy the eggs there, but my better half makes baked goods, so she uses them. You know, so eggs are very important. Try going to Sam's Club, no eggs. Try going to Albertson's, sometimes no eggs. You know, it was, there was scarcity happening and it's important from, as a food source. I also say this for the planning department, make sure that you look at, if you're going to do something on this, there's animal keeping ordinances that are on a lot of rural communities. This is a rural community. Help us keep that. It's very important. You know, we're not Las Vegas. You know, if we wanted to be in Las Vegas, we'd live there. But we live here because we like it. And we really, you hear the passion. We enjoy our community and we want to make sure that we keep that rural aspect. We can still be respectful of other people, but yes, keep the rural aspect. And by the way, Director, that was a great job of explaining, hey, this is, this is adding it to the VR20. That was very good, that was helpful for a lot of people, as we could see. But look at it, look at it from a standpoint of, we're a rural community and we'd like to stay that way.
Good evening, David Boruchowitz, B-O-R-U-C-H-O-W-I-T-Z. I happen to live in a VR20 and I also happen to have chickens. I'm here in front of you today to tell you to please be realistic about the approach to this ordinance. One of the questions I heard of Director Wagner was, if we have the noise ordinance, why do we need the rooster? His response to you was, oh, it really doesn't have anything to do with that, it has to do with preventing them from reproducing to keep us to our 10 chickens. I can go to Tractor Supply and buy 100 chickens and have no rooster. That's an absurd reason to restrict having a rooster. It doesn't make any sense. The restriction on the number of hens, if you have 10 hens, you're lucky if you get eight, eight eggs a day, if you have really, really good hens. I don't know about the people that eat eggs, but in our house, I'm on a diet, I know I don't necessarily look like it, but a dozen eggs a day could often be consumed, which means I have to buy eggs with my chickens. When I'm home on a weekend, I've heard my rooster crow in my entire life of having chickens three times. Once, there was a hawk eating one of the hens and he was fighting the hawk off. The other time, I had put a couple new chickens in there and there was a rooster that I didn't realize I had gotten with the hens and they were in a fight. And the third time was when a coyote was on the top of my block wall looking in. Those are the only three times. Yet I hear a rooster every minute of my weekend. Do you know where it comes from? The street behind me, that's not a VR20. So that guy gets to keep his rooster that crows all day long, but me in a VR20, I can't have a rooster, even a quiet one. You've heard a lot of comments from a lot of people in the audience. I don't know most of these people, I'm sure several of them recognize me. However, I look out and I realize that there is a room full of people that I couldn't tell you their names and we all share one thing, we love chickens. Last night I got home and a hen had hatched a chick that I didn't know she was sitting on eggs. And the poor chicken, it's 120 degrees out there and she was a bad mother and she cooked her chick. And when I get home, he looks barely alive and for 45 minutes I hold him, trying to cool him down, hoping desperately to save this baby chick. He died. But I didn't do that because I don't care about chickens. I could have thrown him out, I could have killed him. I desperately tried to cool him down, thinking maybe there was a hope that my little chick could be saved from his hard boiling that occurred. We care about chickens in this group and I'm sure many of you that sit making these decisions not only understand our position, but probably share in it. If there is a concern relating zoning and what should be allowed, the first step in this community is to revisit the zoning because it should be impossible that I live in an area where I can't have a rooster, but the person literally directly behind my house can have one. That is illogical. Much as has been shared with you throughout this is the sharing of eggs, which we also have done. And I appreciate your time and I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Davis, D-A-V-I-S. I only have a couple of quick statements to make to you. One of them being that with you introducing this ordinance and opening up an area that has been kept from having chickens, you might have some newbies in town that doesn't know how to really control chickens. I'm sure they could ask anybody in this room and they'd be more than glad, including myself, to teach them how they can control the number of chickens that are hatched out on their property. And as, I've been living in this town for 26 years, I've yet to hear of anybody that was complained upon because they were, they just had out of control chicken populations. My point here is though, while there are going to be some newbies coming into town, it's going to make some mistakes. This town was developed and has grown all these years- This town was developed and has grown all these years on the backs of the ones who lived in the rural lifestyle and chose to live in the rural lifestyle. And without them, Perump would not exist today. And I feel that every one of you, number one can, number one commitment should be to those people who were here first. As for these people that's coming and buying houses in these communities built within our community, if they got a problem with it, well, they came to the wrong town. Because we're not gonna step back and let them take over the town here like's been done in so many other areas. So please keep in mind who really this town belongs to. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Risa Esfahani, E S F A H A N I. Sorry. I think one of the biggest issues that most of the people here have is that there wasn't that clarification in the drafts. I know for myself, when I read it through, it kind of threw me for, you know, a curveball, and I was like, why would this all of a sudden come out of nowhere? So I think that clarification really did help, and I can't imagine that most of our town is against allowing the VR twenties to have chickens. I think that when moving forward, if this draft continues to go through that process, and with any other livestock-related matter, that is clarified, very, very clear from the beginning, so then that way, the general public, we're not consistently always reading drafts to understand all of the little nuances in it. I'm a software engineer, and even I don't understand it all. And I can even say, just from trying to find a zoning map and understanding the zoning map, can be very difficult to see, is that a light yellow, or is that a light, light yellow? And that differences in the actual zoning map makes it very hard, and a lot of people, I think, may not know where they're zoned. Because it's, it's a little bit difficult to understand, we have all these colors, but we don't really utilize them. And I know for myself and many other people that, you know, when we were talking on Facebook and whatnot, that was one of their concerns, was, well, what is VR twenty? Well, I'm not sure, I'd have to pull up a zoning map. You know, and then we're looking at it, and we're like, well, that's kind of by one sixty, so am I zoned in that or not, and then you had to try to figure it out more. I, I do think that it is a valid concern that if, let's say, as a rezoning, you know, that's somebody else said that, that they had, they bought their house and their house was rezoned, what happens then? Like, so, I understand why we're wanting to do this, and I agree with moving it forward, one hundred percent. I just think that there might be some clarifications that need to be made as far as what happens if there's rezoning. Is this only for current VR twenty? Or like, if, what happens then if we go back into looking at rezoning? And I think that's, that's pretty much all I got. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Avery, A V E R Y. A year ago, my family and I ran away from Vegas and came to Perump. I was here fifty years ago. They snatched me and took me back to Vegas. They wanted to start a war, so they rolled the balls, and I was the person who fired them. So I've been out, out and out at the biggest mouth in Vegas for a long time. When I came here, I went to my neighbors and said, I need to do some chickens, because my daughter is a paraplegic, my brother has had six cerebral strokes, my best friend Marvin is a double amputee because one of his legs was cut off the wrong way, and without his permission, and my best friend Robert Moon is an ex-stunt man. And they needed help, and they have no family. So I take care of them, and I needed chickens. So I went to my neighbors, I did it different, I checked with them. The reason I'm here is all those people I give eggs to or told me I needed to come and find out what was going on. Not because they were mad, just they were worried about their eggs. This, I've lived in Vegas, and I watched it go down the sewer with a vengeance. I saw people and developers do things you can't even imagine. I saw people, I went to their place to live, and they were dead, and they were shot, and there was never an investigation done. I worked for the Las Vegas Review-Journal for thirty-five years on the streets. I've had a gun put in my face twenty-five times, and I'm still alive. So I am either the luckiest human being that ever lived, or the baddest bitch that ever walked through those doors. I will fight a fight if it's worth fighting. I understand what people say, and I understand what they're feeling, and I understand how they feel about the government right now. But every morning that my rooster crows, he pales compared to the peacocks in the Horizons that live in a trailer park. And he tells me everything that goes on in my yard. And there's, every day, there's twenty-five people that say, I need four eggs, I got a recipe, I forgot. And since I'm right down the street, because everybody in our neighborhood gets my eggs, this, my standing line is, they're in the refrigerator. And I had to get more hens, because my daughter, who's a registered nurse, is coming to get ten dozen eggs on Friday. And I only have eleven hens, and they lay ten eggs a day. So I had to get a few more because I couldn't cover the demand. That's all I do. The garden is split up for the people, whatever we don't eat, we give away. That's why we came here, we're all old, really old, there's some dirt on this planet younger than I am. So that's what we're doing, and I came to Perump to do it, because this is the last hurrah. I'm interested to find out what you're going to do.
And Ms. Avery, your three minutes are up.
Thank you, darling, I gotta go back to work.
Good evening, my name is Jared Houston, H O U S T O N. I'm currently active-duty military, I've only lived here for a year as of last month. I'll be brief, but I wanted to give you some statistics. So I currently am not in a VR twenty, but I have, as of today, have twenty-five chickens, one rooster, a goose, two guineas, and two turkeys. But I say that, of the twenty-five I currently have, that is of a total of about fifty-three that I've had for the past year. Whether it be the heat, or mostly coyotes, or even today, I had a hawk come out and kill one of my meat birds, it was only a few weeks old. But point of that being is, I do, I do appreciate everyone expounding on and clarifying what the bill actually does, and does actually allow it, rather than as it sits now, not allowing it in VR twenties. I do appreciate that, and it is why I was here, because I was under the misunderstanding that it doesn't. So thank you for that. But statistically, there's a bit of a higher turnover, so I think ten would be a little bit more restrictive than it could be, so I think it could be expanded out. So, just thought.
Hi, I'm Janice Six, S I X, like the number. I don't live here, but I live in Tonopah. I moved to Las Vegas in nineteen sixty-eight when I was twelve. I'm sorry, I'm so emotional, but I grew up in that town when it was small. And you could ride your horses, or motorcycles, or four-wheelers anywhere in Vegas that you wanted to, other than downtown Fremont Street, or maybe right on the strip. And I moved away in eighty-two to Tonopah. And I've watched all of the laws and the regulations and things set into Vegas to where it's at the point it is now, it's just ruined. And when I moved to Tonopah, I was kind of appalled that they had put restrictions there, and moved all the livestock and chickens and animals all out of town, out to the horse corrals on Highway Six. I love Perump. I've had family here since nineteen seventy, so I've been in the area. I actually bought my first horse here in nineteen sixty-eight when I was twelve for a hundred dollars with the saddle. And I remember coming over the hill and seeing maybe five places out here, and it was just all ranching and horses and cattle and, you know, alfalfa and cotton. And I love this valley because it reminds me of Vegas when I was young. And I hate to see small restrictions come in, even gradually, because I feel eventually, are we gonna allow it to become Vegas? Are we gonna allow little regulations and, and things to start petering in to ruin this community that everybody moved here for because of the freedoms, and because they could get land and not be on top of each other, and not live in Vegas, or, you know, California, or somewhere where they're so jammed in and just can't breathe, you can't do anything. You know, HOA is there in Vegas, you can't even park on the street when you go visit your friends. You have to park blocks away at their little parking areas. I just don't want to see Perump become that by letting little rules and regulations and laws filter in to ruin this valley like Vegas was. That's all I got to say.
My name is Joseph Hans, H A N S. I've lived all over, northwest, south. I've lived all over, northwest, south, in the south, I've seen this happen in the south, where they put a regulation in where you could only have twelve chickens. Then chickens would die, and then the county decided, well, chickens die. To replace a chicken, you're gonna have to pay us five dollars. Okay? That's where I see this going. This whole thing is about the roosters. Everybody's made comments what the roosters do and what they're good for. We all agree to that. Okay, I live where there's roosters, they don't bother me. But I live five point one miles from a racetrack that I have to listen to on Saturday morning. But that's okay. So I guess.
My name's Ken McLeroy, M C, capital M C, capital L E R O Y. I'd like a clarification. I heard earlier you say that the VR twenty is normally for twenty thousand size lot or smaller. I also heard you say that it could be for a fifty-acre ranch, or a fifteen-acre ranch. What is the difference between the twenty thousand and a fifty acre and a fifteen? Why is it still a VR twenty?
I'll answer that for you, it's just because the zoning, whoever owns the property has never requested a zone change, back when the zoning was applied back in two thousand and four. They, you know, since that point, it's been VR twenty, and we have had several people come forward with lots that are bigger than twenty thousand square feet and request a zone change more appropriate to the size of their lot, because they want to do farming or have animals and stuff like that, so it's just a matter of that.
Okay, so, well, that being the case, is it possible then that you could change the VR twenty to any place that requests that change to be made?
To change, like, something that wasn't zoned VR twenty to VR twenty?
No, if, if it's already a VR twenty, can they come and request a change from a VR twenty to something else so that they can have their chickens?
Yes, if the size of the lot's big enough, yes. VR twenty is designed for half-acre lots.
Right, but we both realize that there's forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet in an acre. So twenty thousand is actually less than a half acre in the first place.
True, but that's where the twenty thousand square foot comes in. Most of the half acres are twenty thousand square foot gross, they're referred to as a half acre.
Okay.
Just like there's RE ones that are, you know, one acre, but most RE one lots are one point two five acres.
Okay, so anything that's twenty thousand or less could never, ever be changed to a different zoning besides VR twenty?
Correct.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Derek Bayer, I've been a Perump resident now for twenty years, B A Y E R. I understand most of this applies to half an acre, but I, I think we're looking at a, too many details in here. If you're looking for a, a solution to the problem, just change the wording, okay? A resident shall have any number of small farm animals, either for pets or sustenance, but not too many to affect the health of either the person nor the animal. If you apply this to all the zoning, then you can eliminate all this headache. Okay, so if it's a quarter acre lot, you know, within reason, and, and most people have common sense here, nobody's gonna have a thousand chickens on an eighth of an acre. I don't know anybody here, and I know the sheriff's department doesn't have the time nor the patience to come out to somebody that's selling their eggs for five dollars a dozen. And if, that, that one, that one struck me as funny. The five, if my son sells five dollars a dozen eggs every day, a dozen eggs for five dollars for three hundred and sixty-five days, he's only making eighteen hundred bucks. I mean, I don't even think that qualifies for reporting that to the IRS. Nobody here is, is out here trying to start an eggland's best market. Let's just keep this simple. Apply that to all the zoning, then you eliminate all the headache, and keep it within reason. Just allow people to make that decision. That's all I have to say.
Could you repeat that sentence you had said?
Say what?
Could you repeat the verbiage that you had said?
A resident shall have any number of small farm animals, either for pets or sustenance, but not too many to affect the health of either the person or the animal. And apply this to all the zoning, you're removing the limits, and that's what a lot of these nice people are complaining about. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kimberly Maxim, M A X, I am, I only heard about this meeting forty-five minutes ago, even though I have signed up for notifications of planning commission meetings. So this is just off the cuff. I'm one of those people that has listened to our president, and who has said that food shortages are coming. I'm also someone who has been watching all the food processing plants burning down, whatever the, mostly burning down, or whatever else to destroy our food. I think that restricting people from having a rooster in the long term is just trying to starve people out. And if you guys really want to be on that side of the tracks, you might want to do some soul searching. There's gonna be extreme food shortages, our president has already told us that. The evidence is there. I don't sell my eggs, I give them to my friends, my friends love my eggs, they're very thankful for them. And I just really think that this is a bad move. I am not in a VR twenty, I am in a rural area where I am allowed large animals. I could have a cow at this particular moment if I wanted, but I don't seek to do that. I do have neighbors that are in the VR twenty area, I know that they have goats, they have chickens, and I think I've heard a turkey. But I don't think that they should be restricted either. I didn't come out here from Vegas to be put under such restraints. So thank you very much for the consideration of all these other people, and thank you for listening.
Hello, my name is Denise, I'm a loud talker, Denise Arceo, A R C E O. I've lived in Perump since nineteen ninety-nine, we moved here. And my concern is just, one thing moves into another thing moves into another thing. For me, I see that more and more people are getting chickens once COVID hit. People really went into a panic about being able to have extra food, gardening people do, I'm the worst gardener, but they, they're doing that for food source. Limiting us, so many people were right on when they said, if you only say you're allowed this many chickens, you're not gonna want to kill your old ones off, otherwise the girl that has a rescue won't be sending them all over there. But it's just, really look into this and, and see, I, I was, it was awesome to come in tonight and see how many supporters of chickens there are, just because it, it's something that goes with us, eggs and that type of stuff. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Richard May, I moved out here a couple of years ago, like the month. We've heard a term HOA Nazis, and they regulate everything to death.
And Mr.?
That's what this is getting to be, I'm just saying it's a term that we've heard.
You still have to spell your last name for the record.
Oh, M A Y, I'm sorry, like the month. So, my girlfriend and I also have a house. So my girlfriend and I also have a house in the HOA district in Las Vegas. And you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do this. I moved out here, bought a house about two years ago because I wanted freedom. I wanted to be able to do everything. Land of the free, home of the brave, all that stuff. So I don't have, I'm bigger than a VR 20. I don't even have chickens. I just came here tonight because it's like, it's been mentioned earlier, creeping incrementalism, taking rights away. Gentleman brought up a real good point here about what's common sense. Let's not regulate everything to death. Let people have their chickens. I had cows next to me. I grew up in Chicago. I'm an urban guy, but I like this place. I love it. So use a common sense approach. Something real simple, when I bought my first house in Vegas, there was a little piece of paper in the real estate stuff, and it said, oh, by the way, you may have a casino built two blocks away from you. Okay, so you have to sign that acknowledging that a casino may be built, whatever the zoning is, I don't know. Anyway, make it real simple. You move out to Perump, have a little denim in the real estate thing that says, you may have a chicken next door to you. You may have a rooster waking you up in the morning. If you don't like it, don't come out here. That's all I got. Oh, one more question. What if my rooster identifies as a hen?
Can he lay an egg?
Can he lay though? That's the question.
Hi, my name's Victoria Rickardelli, R I C C A R D E L L I. When I got married, it took me three months to learn how to spell my own name. I misunderstood until you explained earlier. I thought you were trying to take my chickens, and I appreciate that you're not. The only thing that I can suggest about the draft is tear it up, let everybody have chickens, and the people that are complaining, put them on a bus and send them away. Thank you.
Les, do we have anyone online?
I have no comments on the phone.
At this time, I will close public comment on this so that we can go back to discussing it. And thank you all for your comments and your patience. Commissioner Turner?
During your research on the different ordinances of other rural areas that had similar ordinance, what were the, we say 10, what were the ones that you had seen? Was there any larger? And if so, were they, for what reasons? Just someone had mentioned Santa Monica. So I quickly pulled it up real quick. And there might be some validity in this one to look around at. It says, roosters are only allowed if they're kept quiet through the noise ordinance. And then permits needed for more than 13 birds. With a, what's it, reasonable set of number. Obviously, 10 is not enough. And it's a big, how am I afraid of saying this? There was a big outcry for the rooster to be allowed. So I'd like to see that considered as well. And then is there a medium ground on the number of chickens to where we can have a, your normal person that just wants to have a couple for eggs, they can go out and get 13, 15, have them, no problem. But then the ones that want to go a little bit bigger on it, have a system where it's just permitted? An inexpensive one, it's not just for the rich. Permits are out here. They always have been. You got money for the feed, you got money for the, how much is permit? For a building?
The only building that would require a permit would be if it was over 200 square feet. A zoning review, which was proposed in here, is $25.
Okay.
Okay, so not to interrupt you, I have one quick question on that first, and then if you can continue with your thought, Commissioner.
Of course.
So, and for that permit, it would have to be more the, something with a foundation. So if you went to Tractor Supply and bought one of their little chicken coops that aren't permanently affixed to the ground, then that would not require you to spend the $25 and get a permit. But if you were going to pour a concrete slab and build something a little more substantial that would generate, would require permit, is that correct?
No, the way this is written, and I think we're using wrong terminologies here, what this would require is a zoning review. Just like if you were gonna build a house or put a eight by eight pump house up or a fence, you know, it would require a zoning review regardless if it was setting on the ground like most of the storage sheds you see around here are just on runners or permanently affixed to the ground. It would require a zoning review to assure that where it's proposed to be set meets the setback requirements.
And that's the $25?
It's a $25 application.
Thank you for the clarification.
But no building permit would be required unless it was, you know, a 200 square foot chicken coop, which...
So if it was a 10, if it was 10 by 20, you'd need a building permit for it. That's quite, that's quite the chicken coop.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Turner. Back to you.
Yeah, he's gonna let me cut to. So what I'm hearing from everybody out there is that they give their neighbors eggs or they give them this. So that would be considered gifting, not a commercial enterprise, correct?
Correct.
So that wouldn't even come into play here at all if they were giving their neighbors things from their chickens? Okay, cool.
I was gonna have a break. So aside from the rooster adage we're seeing there and a reconsideration of the numbering of chickens, I really did like the sentence the gentleman had within reasonable, that the pets and small animals, you realize, you know, which one?
I, I...
I'm not saying it works as it stands, but I'm just saying there might be something there to...
See, this is the thing that you run into when you're trying to draft ordinances, is you don't want to create arbitrary, arbitrary parts of the code.
That's why I said needs to...
What I would consider reasonable is gonna be different than your consideration of reasonable, different than Steve's consideration of reasonable.
I...
And that's where we try to put a number to something.
Right.
Just for that reason, because it's not fair. I mean, people tend to need to know what the parameters are.
And what I, like I said, I wasn't saying it for verbatim, but possibly some verbiage within that sentence be workshopped into the number or permit. Like I said, this one, Santa Monica did the permits after a certain number. But I think the number of chickens needs to be, according to what we're hearing, needs to be increased, roosters, rooster allowed. And then, oh, I just want to put it out there, for the incremental rules coming, you guys wouldn't let us do that, come on. This is us opening up and allowing you to have more chickens. We want to make more freedom. I don't think if we got carried away, you guys would let us. So I don't think there's too much worry about that in Perump. Been here all my life, and since I was born, moved away, lived around the world and came back, I recognize every inch of this place. It's changed a little, but it's still my home and it's still my, I love it. It's the rural place I came back to. I've lived across the seas, everything, but I chose Perump to come back to. And I want to see it ruled just as much as everyone else. So we're trying to help the ones that have VR 20. And there was one gentleman up here earlier that was the exact case that brought this to us because it wasn't the first time, and we didn't find it fair that he not, that he not be allowed to have his chickens on a half acre. So we wanted to do something about it. But at the same time, for as many people that are here, there's just, probably not as many, but there's still citizens of Perump that have, that like the law the way it is. So we're trying to find a happy medium ground for everyone in Perump. And that some of them are the ones that lived here for a long time. Maybe they don't like the smell. Maybe they've retired and want a little more quietness. So that's why we're trying to find that happy medium ground. We're allowing something, opening up for you. And we want it to work. We just need your help. The roosters, we now hear you on that one. You definitely want roosters put in this draft. We got you. So we're gonna, I'm requesting that that be considered on the draft. And another look at the number of chickens.
Do you have a suggestion?
Oh, I knew you were gonna do that. All right, we got the back.
We're not gonna open it back up.
Yes, I was teasing.
Because we...
Does anyone else have a weigh-in on the number of chickens here?
Commissioner Skinner, you look like you want to say something?
Yes, I do, I do. So I, just as an overall observation based on what was said by the public, is it's clear to me that how the ordinance is written is too restrictive and is unpalatable for the public. And I think what we're really trying to do here as a planning commission is to put something in front of the Board of County Commissioners that they can, they can act on. And so I think as, in general, as feedback, I think we need to simplify this ordinance. And so I like the idea, Commissioner Turner, of striking number, in section D, number two and number three. I think you just, you just strike those. And as we move towards a more, or a less restrictive ordinance, I think it's okay to have a less restrictive ordinance to pass something like that and then see how it works. And then after, after we see what happens, we can then adjust the sales. Because really what we're looking for is, is what happens when this hits the ground? And we want to see what happens from that. So, you know, I would recommend striking two and three. I would recommend striking number four, except for the point on a zoning review is required for construction if you're building an accessory structure. In section C, number four, I think that there needs to be clarification about what a chicken coop is. And I think in the, in number four, chicken coops that are not accessory structures should be allowed to have a five foot setback. And I think we're being just a tiny bit short sighted by suggesting that chicken coops should be only in the rear yards or in the side yards because as we know, a lot of folks have fully fenced properties, and it makes more sense sometimes to have them in the front yards. So, so I think that we're being a little bit too restrictive there. And, and you know, like I was saying about potentially, you know, see how it goes, see what the feedback is from the, from the public, what are the complaints? And then we can adjust the sales down the road. But ultimately, I just want to give something to the county commissioners that they can work with so that they don't have to necessarily go through the same process of feedback that we went, went through with tonight. The whole point of us to have all this feedback tonight is that something goes before the Board of County Commissioners that's a little bit more palatable to the public. So instead of 400 people showing up, there's maybe, you know, 300 people or something like that. So, you know, just being fair to them.
On, and what I agree with most, on number two, striking it completely, the, are you saying, see how it's running the ground? The only problem on that is let's say it doesn't work hitting the ground, putting a number on it then, there'd be a lot more. If you say, hey, you can have as many, oh, you know what, it's not working, let's cut it down to 20, then we'd have 800 people instead. Whereas then if we open it up gradually, might be the step, like go 15 now if it's working, maybe, you know, if we get requests for more or complaints about wanting more chickens, then we can add it on later. It's just easier to give more than to try to restrict.
Well, the other thing that I think that we need to recognize as we give staff direction in further changes to the draft is that there needs to be some quantifiable number in there not to restrict all of these people so much as to give staff direction so that when they get a complaint and they have to show up and they have to figure out what's reasonable and what's not reasonable, they have guidance. That's, that's the whole point of this draft and this ordinance is to help our staff figure out what is reasonable so when they show up, so they don't look at the poor homeowner and go, well, you know, I don't really know how many you're allowed to have, because that's not fair. So I think that we can give them some direction to make some changes to certainly maybe revisit the rooster idea and the quantity of chickens. But we have to at some point come up with something that seems reasonable so that they have something that they can then pass good information on to someone who wants to know, how many am I allowed? What am I allowed to do? We have to give them that, that guidance. That's only fair.
Right. I would suggest 18 chickens. What's the board's thought on that?
I disagree. I think based on the, I don't think we should, like what the director was pointing out, we can't be just picking arbitrary numbers. And so what we do needs to be based, needs to be like an evidence-based approach. So I think that 10 are too few, and 18 are likely too few still. But there is a number. I don't know what it is. But maybe we can direct staff to, you know, figure out what, you know...
Is it some information, like how many eggs they lay per day? What, like?
Well, my, my, what I prefer is just to strike it. And then we pass as, as a less restrictive ordinance and then see how it works. And once we see how it works, we can adjust our sales. That's the approach I prefer.
And back to the point, then if you have to restrict them, it would be madhouse.
And it does, and it fails?
And that's a very good point.
I'd be on that side.
That's a very good point, because that is, that is definitely something we deal with a lot. But there's a couple of things to consider here. One of them is if this was adopted into an ordinance in whatever form, fashion it is, and let's say we put a number to it of 20 chickens, eight chickens, whatever that number is. If this is adopted and a permissive thing now on this zoned property, a waiver could be applied for. If somebody said, you know what, I've got a family of eight and 10 chickens, 12 chickens, whatever, just won't cut it for us. We need 22. We can do that. But what that allows us to do still through a waiver application is put conditions and safeguards in there to try to still keep it from getting to an unmanageable state. Or that if it starts causing a disturbance in the neighborhood with the neighbors next door or the neighbor across the street or behind them, whatever, it gives us an avenue to try to address it and get it rectified. But the other thing to consider too by adopting this ordinance, if it was to go before the board and get adopted, is there's a lot of people that live in VR 20 today that might have purchased the property there because they don't want to be around any type of farm animals. So by adopting this, we're now imposing that on them. So, I mean, there's lots of things to consider here. So I, I understand your point, but I also understand Commissioner Turner's point. You will not, I'm gonna tell you right now. You heard a few of these folks say, I live on VR 20 and I have chickens. I'm not getting rid of my chickens, okay? You put no number to it and, and, you know, there might be a person that can manage 50 chickens, 100 chickens, but not everybody is equipped to do that. Not everybody doesn't have jobs through the day and can keep it, keep it up and manage it. So I do think it's important that you put some kind of a number to it. So that's just my two cents.
My personal thought on this is that we need to do, not from necessarily other model, other ordinances, but we need to do a little more research on, into apparently animal husbandry so that we understand more about what, what is correct for these chickens and what's not. And I don't know that that's really something that's appropriate to put on planning, but certainly when we're looking at animals, we need to think a little bit more. Maybe we can partner with Department of Ag or somebody to come up with what is a reasonable guideline because what, I'm sure that they have real guidelines that address how much room you need for a chicken or a turkey or whatever the animal is because that's what they do. They're agriculture. And, you know, I heard one lady say you need two to four feet per chicken. Well, there's a big difference between two feet and four feet. So I don't know what the right thing is. So I think that if I were gonna make a motion, which as chair I am not, I would... put this back for further review and some more education. And so we could come up with what was a more reasonable draft as far as the roosters and the quantity and things like that. I certainly get the point of you only have one rooster, but I, I don't know what's an appropriate size for the amount of chickens. And maybe that's, needs to be in here, is that if you have X amount of chickens, you have to have a coop of X amount of size to, or you can't have that many chickens, because you have to make sure you have enough room for all the chickens. I mean, to be reasonable. So I think, and we need to know a little bit more about, um, the, the health and happiness of a chicken.
But on the, on the requirement of the sizes, we already have, like, um, we already have ordinances in for the protection and well-being of animals. And so it's back to that, not adding too much on to it, not, not being too, trying to be too controlling. So that part.
But who's going to oversee that?
I mean, we already have.
We, we, that should certainly cannot be planning or code enforcement, because without proper guidance, they're not gonna know if that's correct. We don't want to put that on animal control. So, we need guidance in there to make it fair, so that when someone who is not in that field, someone who does not raise chickens can go out, because they're gonna be a county employee of some, acting on a code complaint generally, and go out and look, there has to be some guidance for them, so that they aren't sitting there going, well, I don't know, they said that this is good for chickens. I've never raised chickens, I don't know. Now, I say that I raised chickens, that's not the issue, but.
Do I?
The county employee very well could be in that spot. And that's not fair of us to set them up for that, when we can see that that could happen. This is seeing the consequence of our action down the road.
I understand that, that part on it. I'm just saying when it comes, so the knowledge should be based around that information. However, adding another ordinance requiring X amount, or X square footage of coop for X amount of birds, when it comes to the well-being of the animals, we already have the ordinances in place to cover that. So not adding another ordinance in here to oversee it when there's already one that oversees it. So, I think it should be, our choices should be based off the knowledge of that, yes. Understanding how big it needs to be and making that count based off of the average. But it goes back to the ordinance on top of ordinance, when we already have one that covers it, such as a nuisance and noise ordinance for the roosters, we don't need to put that, or I mean, we don't need to keep a rooster out because of that, because we already have a ordinance that covers it. Same thing with the well-being of the chickens, be, having enough room, that falls under the well-being, the ordinances that cover the well-being of animals and pets and such. See what I'm saying?
Well, like, like you heard the Sheriff state, or noise ordinance, we don't have one. We have a nuisance ordinance.
Nuisance, sorry.
Noise, odors, that type of stuff. Very weak ordinance. It's got no parameters to it at all, for, again, what's offensive to me, what I think's an excessive smell. It's just off of this thing right here. We, there's no metrics as to what's considered excessive smell, what's considered too loud of decibel noise on the neighbor's property. So, you can't rely on that code. It is almost unenforceable. The Board of County Commissioners knows this. They've had things brought in front of them, having to do with that, with people trying to get them to declare it a nuisance, but we have no parameters for it. So, that would have to be fixed in order for it to not have to be written somewhere.
I don't wanna change that. That's, again, too much control on trying to say what the smell is. I'm not, sorry.
Okay, so, bottom line, what direction would we like to give staff regarding this draft?
I have a, I have a couple of questions.
It's gonna be my comment, Madam Chair, is what are you guys gonna do? I mean, we've talked about it now for quite a long time. We've heard a lot of comment. Uh, you need to move on with the rest of the agenda. Uh, so what's the, what is the opinion of the commissioners to give direction? And if you don't have anything, you might have to bring this thing back.
I want a direction to bring back.
And I think Commissioner Blackstock would like to say something.
Had a couple of people come up here and they're making comments about they're on VR 20, and they've got animals and they don't want to get rid of them. The ones that have more than what's requested here, are they grandfathered in of some sort? Or it's just, I know, we're complaint-driven, so if nobody's gonna complain about anything, they could have 50 and nobody's gonna.
You're right. If there's not a complaint, then it wouldn't more than likely be addressed. Well, it wouldn't be addressed. But it's not legal today. If they have one chicken today, they are illegal. So there would be no grandfathering. If they had 20 chickens today, it's still illegal.
Right, today.
So, no matter what the number was in here, it would not be grandfathered.
Well, going back to our original thing here, you know, we had, had the amount of chickens and the roosters and stuff, that might be, to me, nitpicked a little bit more and maybe change, and look at some real data someplace. But the idea is we're, I don't say, I hate to say this, but giving something here, because they're allowing chickens, all the ones we had that weren't allowed. To me, that's a good thing. I don't think, I don't see us imposing more restrictions on something on this one. The other suggestion I would make on this thing, since it seems to be pretty controversial, but the people are here, because I realize there could be five times as many people out there want to come in and say, I don't want the chickens next door to me. We're not there right now. Is this something we can look at after we decide what to do to, for direction? And maybe I'm, I'm looking at this the wrong direction, is some kind of, of timeframe on it? Try it for two years and see what happens. See how many people complain, see what kind of restrictions there, instead of making something permanent? It seems to be, I do, I do realize people talking about, you know, keeping chickens, the, the economy's going downhill, and if I vote for the next three years, uh, but, uh, you know, maybe just something needs to be opened up we can look at again without making it a permanent ordinance right now.
There really is no way. Once it becomes an ordinance, it's an ordinance. Now, ordinances can always be changed, just like this is a tempting to do right here. There's a process to it. So, if, if a trial run, you know, if, if that's what you're gonna call it, was kind of the goal, and we discovered that, you know, everything's fine, or, or there's problems that came from it, the ordinance could always be changed at a later date. But fact of the matter is today, without this ordinance, there's no chickens allowed in VR 20.
May I suggest direction, um, that we bring this back next month, um, ask for staff if they could pull info of other, um, ordinances for us when it comes to rooster, number of chickens, and, what else was the other ones? Anything else? Oh, no, sorry, um, not the roosters, we're just gonna, so just number of chickens on different ordinances?
Well, I don't think that's gonna get you the information you're looking for, because again, it's gonna vary across.
What would you recommend?
Like, like we experienced in our research. I think looking into, if there's some kind of a guideline, like that was mentioned by one of the commenters, of a two to four feet, you know, if it's two feet, if it's four feet, whatever, and finding that kind of an information and coming up with a number based on that, like we, I think that's a better way to go.
I think that would be the direction.
I think bringing a bunch more information into the backup is just gonna cause a lot more confusion.
So that would be my direction, um, or my suggested direction, would be for them to come back with info of, that we can base the count on.
So what I'm gonna take that as, is we're gonna come back with a draft.
Right.
With the few changes or whatever in it, and we can bring that info with us to the point. But, I mean, this is, three times we've had discussions about this chicken ordinance, and it either needs to just die and go away, or we need to start moving in a direction that we think we can get to. So, that would be my suggestion.
I think after next one, we'd be able to push it up.
You, Chair? Okay, so, um, I think that it's gonna be difficult for us to come to a consensus as a planning commission on this. I think at the root of this, what we're trying to do is make it allowable and no longer illegal for those who have VR 20, uh, properties to have chickens. So why don't we just do that? So, so that would be my direction to staff. It's clear that we're not gonna have consensus on the restrictions. And I, and I, I'm gonna say the same thing again. Bring back a draft that has less, fewer restrictions, and reflects some of the comments that have been said, but really gets at the crux of what we're trying to do here, so that we don't have to let this die. Because what you, what, what the planning commission has directed staff to do is a very good thing. And it's very important that it happens, because as we've heard tonight, we basically have a room full of people who are breaking the law, who didn't know they were doing that. You know, I, or breaking an ordinance, sorry, my bad, or whatever. They're, they're acting inappropriately on their property. Sorry, I had to redo that. So, um, but what we want folks to be, is we want them to feel comfortable on their property, knowing that when they have chickens, it's, it's okay to do so, and that they don't have to worry about anybody coming over and taking their chickens away or, or making it difficult for them. I think that's what I would recommend to staff, if you, if everyone else is okay with that. If you don't like it, that's cool too. But, um, but that's my.
In order for us to actually give staff direction, somebody has to put it in.
Well, I'm gonna move.
Motion with a second, no?
No, this is, this is not an action item. It was just discussion.
Oh.
And we've been taking notes. So, we can just take all your suggestions.
And bring it back to us in a month.
Yeah.
And at that one, we make, we finalize and send it up to, you awake, so?
It's gonna come to you, it's gonna come to you as a draft, Commissioner. It's gonna come to you a draft again, and then, then it's probably gonna go back to them to be turned into a actual item that you'll come vote on.
Okay, so means to do much from now that we send it up to you?
Yeah, it's gonna take you some time to get there.
Okay. So, yeah, let's move to the last, let's take this step, yeah?
Okay, so we will, you'll get us the additional information and we will revisit this in a month. All right. All right. Moving on. I gotta find it, so bear with me.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out and helping us.
Want to hear about racetracks?
Okay. Move, moving on to item eight, a presentation by Tim Bohannon, President of the Nevada Standard Bread Association, Inc., regarding a possible project to build an equine performance center in Perom.
Madam Chair, I would suggest maybe a couple of minutes.
To let everybody leave?
Let everybody leave, yes.
Yeah, I've tried to do that, Sharon, you remember that?
Commissioner Tyler, can we, can we officially go on recess? Can you announce an official recess?
How long a recess?
Remember all the comments?
We'll take a, a five-minute recess and reconvene at 8:50.
I get it, but the point of this whole thing is, it's trying to fix something that, I mean, obviously times have changed, you know? I don't disagree with you there, but the fact of the matter is, is it's there. So, this is the process to try to fix it, so. So, this is the process to try to fix it, so.
Fuck.
All right, have a good night.
Fuck.
All right.
Fuck.
All right.
Fuck.
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 and with a presentation by Tim Bohannon, President of the Nevada Standardbred Association, Inc., regarding a possible project to build an equine performance center in Perump.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Tim Bohannon here. Um, we will not, oh, B-O-H-A-N-N-O-N. We hopefully will not take two hours here. I do want to make those who are aware, who are dialing in on the phone, we, we have a couple of collaborators that are gonna be on the phone. So, Paul and Corey, this is a heads up for you. I'll take about two minutes to three minutes upfront for the introduction, and then Mike will take, take over on the fly management, and then we'll get to your part shortly after that, after I switch slides. Let me start us off. Tim Bohannon with the Nevada Standardbred Association. We have been working on a project in Perump for about two years now, and have gone through a lot of phases as far as the planning, the preparation, the collaborations, making sure that we're, we're doing what we need to do from a horseman's standpoint, and also from a business standpoint, sustainability standpoint as well. Just a disclaimer, the general disclaimer of this presentation is for informational purposes and does not represent a binding agreement. In other words, things are subject to change, they can change, most likely they will in some way, shape, or form, but hopefully not drastically, because we did a lot of good homework on this, and we think we're moving in the right direction here. From our summary tonight, we'll talk about manure management, we'll talk about what about the smell and flies and horses and, you know, things of that nature. Already mentioned, you know, being from a rural community, having grown up in, in southern, southwest Ohio, the hog capital of Ohio, you know, you're, you're used to smells. Well, here, we wanna make sure that we, we manage that process. And what we'll be getting into tonight is that discussion. But to give you a quick 20-second commercial about what we intend to do. We intend to bring out the Perump Valley Equine Performance Center of Excellence for racing of standardbred horses, the first standardbred track in the state of Nevada ever. And then also, we will have quarters that we've been working with as well. We have a race secretary from, from Masundlin, who's, who's on our consulting team, as well as a representative from Century Downs up in Alberta, who's also on our consulting team as well. What we'll get into tonight, we'll also talk about High Point bedding and what, what they can do in addressing the problem, the solution, and the plant and products that they may have. From, for those who have not been exposed to it, what you see here is a layout of the facility once it's fully built. That will take quite a bit of time. Phase one is basically on your right, as phase one and two and phase three plus is on the left. The racing side will come first. On the left side, that will be dedicated to training, education, including you and our extension and the equine science, so if you're looking for a reference from what we talked about earlier, the extension office will have that content for you that you're looking for. Going into manure management, I'll let Mike kinda touch on that, do a brief introduction and naming, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, my name is Mike Hyde, H-Y-D-E. Having been around in the Perump area, one of the biggest things that we came up when we first started with this program was a local area known as where the dairy was. And the biggest thing that everybody complained about was the amount of flies, the amount of noise, the amount of smell, and everything else. So, early, early in the plan, we decided to put this together. If you notice on here, the fly living cycle, from the time that it becomes an egg until the time that it actually becomes a fly that can come around and bother you, is a very, very sufficient amount of time, which we're going to cut that by many, many days. If you look at the bottom, it says in the larva, that is between four to seven days by itself. That means the larva has to live in the manure, the part that drops on the ground. With our facility, not only is the barns, but also in any amount of the track, any place of the exercised area where the horse will go, the manure will be picked up. I don't know if anybody knows, but if you go to one of these great, big, huge places like a roller coaster, Capital World, Tim and I know about Cedar Point, they have people who go around on a constant basis and pick up cigarette wrappers, cigarettes, old cups, et cetera, so on. We're talking by the minute, not by the two or three days. So, this is what we're going to be doing. We brought into the fact that we wanna use whatever that horse can give us. In other words, manure is money. The product could be turned into some other things, which are gonna be involved with growth agriculturally, as well as we can take the urine and be able to take out anything from the urine, so it is a monetary value to do that. We have on board with us Paul Cross, who is the president, excuse me, and Corey, who is involved with this program, I'd like to invite them on so that they can be able to discuss some what we have talked about.
Oh, I'm switching over to presentations, and then when I, when I load it, take it away.
No problem whatsoever, thank you so much. My name is Paul Cross, C-R-O-S-S, and Cory Smalge, she's on the phone with me, S-M-A-L-L-E-G-A-N-G-E. And if we could go to slide two, Tim, just being that I'm on the phone, I just, I'll just mention that if we can just go through each slide. But I wanna thank you commissioners for letting us showcase our manure management program that will take horse stall residual waste from this region to be processed undercover to create healthy, high-quality shavings and non-woody biomass. So, we waste nothing in the process, and your acceptance, just to hear our solution and the collaboration with Mike and Tim is very encouraging. I also just wanted to ask, is my voice clear or too loud, or is it okay at this time to continue?
Very good.
Leamis Charlie.
Great. So, High Point works with rural equestrian regions to build a recycling facility that will reduce operational costs at the farm level, reduce waste disposal costs, and provide competitively priced bedding to the local industry. And our goal is to promote a sustainable brand with industry leaders, creating environmental and economic benefits for Knight County and the people of Perump. If you could go to slide three for me. So, to bring this waste management crisis sort of top of mind, because a lot of people may not even realize there is a crisis within store residual waste. When a competition, a show, or a racehorse is stabled inside, they produce one ton of used stall bedding every month. So, that's over thirty-six thou, sorry, thirty-six million tons of stall waste is created year after year in the U.S. from just three million horses, and you can multiply that number with fifty-two million horses in the world. In Nevada, there's over seventy thousand horses, and outside we'll process bedding from the local region of up to only five thousand, starting with two thousand, twenty-four thousand tons of waste, and we can work out depending on how many horses in the region for this project with Mike and Tim, and if we wish to expand that outside to help the region solve this problem. And what's happened is that we've created a pollutant, which is at a critical level. And what's happening is it's affecting climate change from the harmful effects of waste being left to rot or compost outside. And this has led to manure leaching into the waterways, offgassing, and you're hearing a lot about the methane offgassing, increased fly and disease, and deforestation, because there is so much bedding that is used in the industry, and eighty percent of that is wood shavings. If we go to the next slide, I just wanted to speak to you a little bit about the waste hierarchy that we follow. This is not ours, it is a standard that waste must be managed without endangering human health, without harming the environment, which includes water, air, soil, plant, animals, and without adversely affecting the countryside. But the last one's important as well, without causing a nuisance through noise odor. So, when we designed the system in 2017 from early adopters and proven equipment, we wanted to make sure we had the most efficient and environmentally friendly option, using all natural compounds with equipment that had low to no emissions and would solve noise, odor, and in the end result, create byproducts from this waste stream. So, if you can go to slide five for me. What I also wanted to share is that you, if, if you don't know the horse industry in, in detail, it's surprising that stall residual waste from high-end barns and show grounds is about seventy percent wood shavings. And what we have to understand is that that wood shaving has, the wood has lignum in wood, and that does not break down. So, what's happening is the wood isn't breaking down, but the manure mixed with hay, grass, and urine starts to decompose and has no value. So, we want to be able to take that waste and bring it to our facility, process it within three to four days. It takes nine minutes to go through our process, and we completely recycle every piece of that back to a strong and profitable product. So, on slide five, really the only three things I wanted to explain is why do we actually do this? And one of the biggest problems was that there is a diminishing disposal sites around the country, and that's because regulations have been shifting so that the horse industry has got to get rid of its waste. It has to be responsible for that waste, but it doesn't know what to do with it. But the restrictions are still there. So, there are restrictions on spreading it, burning it, or putting it into landfills. And environmentally, we have problems with that urea and leaching into the water, and that's creating water quality problems, algae blooms in a lot of areas, which is killing fish, and there's a lot of areas where there is water and where they use, and tourism is being affected by it. The methane offgassing, we spoke about that, creates air pollutants, and spreading it actually depletes the nitrates of this agricultural land that we're trying to use and grow from a food perspective is being diminished if we try to use horse waste as a manure. So, our solution, which is patent pending, is to convert all of that into reusable products, make sure that we're compliant with any permit of waste regulations in Nevada, and we're gonna reduce the burning, the composting, and we're gonna take all of that waste out of the landfill. I'll go into other pieces of that as we go forward, because I don't wanna take too much time. But the idea here is that we have a solution, and we want to make sure that we create an environment that is solid and positive for Perump.
And Paul, we often feel, we often feel questions that talks about keeping the aquifer safe and making sure that our quality of water is still solid with, with this approach that, that you're discussing. You're, you're saying that addresses that, correct?
Yes, one hundred percent. We've solved the problem of water, because we're actually gonna trap that water through thermodynamic drying, which is in my next couple of slides, and we're actually gonna produce about one million gallons of water that we can reuse into the land, and because we're gonna stop any of the leaching, which is the manure buns and the urine going into the, into the ground, we're gonna help the aquifers as well from being much more positive. Does that answer that question, Tim?
Fantastic, and I moved this over to slide six.
Yeah, okay. So, so, I think this is, this is more of a countrywide issue, but it is going down to every county that is really focusing on the equestrian industry, and that is wood prices are rising. Wood prices are rising for houses, they're rising for bedding for the horses, energy costs are rising, transportation and emissions is becoming a huge issue. We are seeing a massive rise in fertilizers and chemical fertilizers, which we don't want. And because there's so much wood being produced, we are having an issue with deforestation, which all encompasses climate change. And I, I really like this statement. By creating revenue streams from a waste stream, we protect the equestrian industry, the planet, and we create highly profitable byproducts sold back to the local community. And that's really, really important to us. So, we create three byproducts. Recycled bedding, that is a hundred percent sustainable. Soil amendment with biochar, because that is a better way to get back into the soil. And we're gonna create energy, and that also includes clean water back to the community, because we need water in, you know, Knight County, obviously, with the, with the heat and the desert environment that we're in. And on slide seven, what we're gonna just see here is that we also wanted, and this was something that Cory and I was very, when we discussed our business model with our team and our advisors, we wanted to make sure that wherever we built, it also had a benefit for the county. And so, we really wanna build county awareness of sustainability, promote innovation through agritourism, and we will always hire in the local community, so that we're hiring locals, they're buying local, we're in a closed-loop economy, so they're buying their own bedding back, and that is a stimulation to the local economy, and that was very, very important to us. So, if we can go on to slide eight, Tim, and I just wanted to show a little bit, a very brief overview of the building. It's designed in an L shape, specifically, so one section is manure, the other section is for the compost, and the larger section is for the whole processing. These are all segregated buildings. It's, they'll be aesthetically pleasing, we use solar panels, carbon filtration, negative air pressure to create this carbon-neutral operation. But what it also does is prevent odor, dust, and noise. So, when the facility goes into the location, especially as it's part of the racetrack that we prevented odor, dust, and noise from getting out of where we are processing. Our equipment manufacturers are experts in separation, drying, infusion, bagging, and our patent pending processes is really how we put that all together. And what I love about it with Tim and Mike's project is that we're going to build the barns, the waste will stay in that barn, and it will be pushed out and directly to our facility, and that will be completely undercover. If we are bringing waste from outside of that area, then what we'll be doing is using covered hauling trucks, but again, directly to us, and it will be completely undercover.
Now, Paul, is this just for, is this, Paul, is this just for?
Yeah, yeah.
Is this just for equine manure, or can we use other, other elements as well?
So, so, great question. So we, we do physically work with the equestrian waste bedding, yes. Of course, it can be used for other bedding and other waste. But what we would like to suggest, and you're stealing my thunder, Tim, no, is that the waste bedding that we create into recycled brand-new bedding can be used in the equestrian industry for chickens, for ducks, for ruminants, for anything in the local region. So that bedding can be reused in multiple different animals.
Fantastic.
Does that answer that question?
Fantastic.
Okay. So what's critically important is our system does not use additional water. Instead, it retains the water from the bedding as condensate, which is a steam that is processed back into cooling towers that is used for irrigation water. It can be used to stop dust there is, or it can actually be put back to the community where we can take and do some R and D in that technology for potable water. But due to the region being very hot, I will say that we will expect to lose about one percent in evaporation from the cooling towers, or about five to eight gallons per minute GPM. But that is the same as one single average household, and that is all we would use in that. And we could take the million or so gallons that we're going to get from converting the urine and any moisture in the bedding, and we could actually use our own water to put that back through the cooling towers. Our infusion technique and natural compounds are also patent-pended, and that is there, and Cory's going to talk to, about this in a few minutes at the end, to really help have healthier horses, healthier riders, and a safer barn environment, where we do not have flies, because as Mike said, they don't hatch, because we basically take that so quickly and process it, the fly eggs that stick inside the manure bun can't do that. So there's less flies in the barn, there'll be less flies in the community, and we're still going to have a wonderful environment for tourism in the region. So I wanted to go through, and I will not spend much time on this, you have the presentation, but I'll go through the three products that we create. We've talked about the fact that within Mike and Tim's master project, we'll remove the waste directly from the stall, pump it underground to a building and process it. If we pull anything from outside, we will use covered hauling trucks. We'll then separate all of the good wood shavings, and through thermodynamic drying, we'll sterilize and dry the bedding while removing any of that water and re, excuse me, water and urea as steam to be reused. The dried bedding is then sent through multiple screens and triple separation to get the very best flakes back. We infuse that with a natural tree oil for, for health, and it's bagged and put back to the same barn. And I'll just use the point number three, which says High Point produces a competitively-priced, premium-quality, hypoallergenic, antibacterial, antifungal, antivial, and virtually dust-free bagged bedding, resold back to the horse barns. So what we'll also do is, what happens is, what is left over is the manure buns, the hay, the grass.
Hang on a second, Paul. Back him up a minute. What's the percentage that you're going to get back out of the total that you put in in regards to this?
Oh, well, I mean, that, that's a longer conversation, but it's a hundred percent. We actually lose about fifteen percent in dust fines, and we actually incorporate another fifteen percent of brand-new shaving into the system every cycle. So we actually are in perpetuality recycling the whole process four times, and we're back to brand-new bedding, we start again. So we do not lose anything through this process. A hundred percent of what goes into our facility will go back out in the form of new bedding, dust, fines, compost, or energy.
Thank you for that.
You're very welcome. And I'm more than welcome to answer any questions after, at the end, and please, you know, I'm trying to get three to four to five years of R and D and knowledge and, and building into fifteen minutes. So the, the soil, what's great about the soil is that we've taken out the wood, and as we've talked, that wood, the lignum in the wood does not break down, it's no good to, to anyone. And so by removing it, we actually get a very high-yield compost soil amendment that we can make into custom blends. And that manure and the compost is made in five days. So we have none of these windrows sitting outside that are creating dust blooms and creating flies and creating mess within, within your county. So we want to bring that all inside, process it within five days, get it back out onto the fields, and start working with regenerative agriculture. And the third slide is renewable energy and R and D. And really, what we're doing there is taking anything that is large wood, some of that dust particles that we don't want to put into the bioreactor, we put them into a nine-hundred-degree pyrolysis unit using electricity. And from that, we are creating biochar, and there are many different, many different types of biochar, I won't get into that tonight, but this is a thousand-year carbon biochar, it's basically the highest quality you can get. We create about thirty percent biochar, seventy percent is thin gas. Thin gas can be very easily stored as electricity, so we use our own electricity, our own gas, to actually run this facility as well with the solar panels. The urea and the washwater and the rainwater converted to steam, and that is then put back in for reuse. And we can capture the methane from that manure bun as well.
Are you looking at one, hang on a second, Paul, are you looking at one or two lines?
One or two lines. Could you please ask the question now?
Yeah, for production lines. One, two lines, three lines, what are we looking at?
Right. So when we take a look at the actual facility, we always have redundancy for a second line. When you look at how many horses with a two thousand, two thousand tons a month of bedding, we can do that in five, six minutes a cycle, and we only need one. Once you go up to the larger amounts, we have three lines of composting facility, we have a six, six-stage pyrolysis unit, and our baggage can produce over a million bags a, a year. And so we always design for the biggest, and then we work backwards to what the region can handle with redundancy. But because everything is undercover and it's processed within, you know, minutes, we're not seeing a backup of waste inside our buildings.
Are you ready for slide twelve yet?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. These are the last two slides, and I'm done. What we're really saying here is what's the reasons that we want to build in Brump in, in Knight County as well? And the cost of produce the bedding, which you would think would be very, very expensive, is actually less than what you can buy horse bedding for today. And if you look at the small ruminants, the rabbits, the chickens that are using bagged bedding, we are way cheaper than that, because we've cut out the middleman, we've completely disrupted the supply chain, and we built in the heart of the region, and all of our feedstock and our tipping fees are free. We get our product free, we create it, we create recycled bedding, push it back out there, and so we can charge the horse owner a fair competitive price for a better product than what they originally bought, and we can do that over and over and over again. And we, as we can create over a million bags, if we're not using everything in the project, we can also then start to go further afield to South Point and even sell our bedding in Vegas, but it's also stamped that we are part of Knight County with this facility. Disposal costs are greatly reduced, especially with this project, because there won't be any, it will be directly from the boss barn directly to our site. But what we found in most regions that we look at, the cost of disposal and hauling trucks and the distance they have to travel on our roads is absolutely astronomical. Here, we're going to be building within a twenty-mile radius of most of the horses in this region, and that's over five thousand horses. So we'll reduce tipping fees, reduce water consumption, reduce wear and tear for transportation on our roads. We'll have a quicker turnaround for disposal coming in, so this will be better for the flies, better for disease. We'll be making sure that the industry is absolutely green and sustainable. One of the things that you'll find, and Cory can attest to this, getting bedding sometimes is extremely hard, especially halfway, three-quarters through the season. We will be on-demand bedding, because we're right in the heart of the region. And of course, it's environmentally sustainable. My goodness, we're going to be the leader in that across the globe. And we're going to help the county and the, the federal and county rules on waste management and on manure to actually uphold the banning of spreading in landfill, because there is now a solution. And in these pictures here is just of Brump and then some of the racetracks, excuse me, some of the horse barns in, in this close region. And my last slide is really just to say that when we went to other neighborhood outreaches for, for rural locations that are concerned about having this type of recycling facility in their county, we were asked multiple questions, and we've brought together a few points here of what we are and what we're not. So we are not a standalone compost or transfer station. There will be no rotting manure to separate and process, because we don't want rotting manure. We want great wood shavings, and the manure buns can then be made to soil amendments. We will only use licensed haulers, and in this case, will be directly from the barn. Wood shavings are around seventy percent wood, thirty percent manure. There'll be no unkept piles outside the property. We obviously will capture all odor, and nothing will be sent off property. We use carbon filters and ozone and negative air pressure to do that. Our fans and our blowers are even low noise and low-level noise. Even our lights are made to make sure that even in the evening, they are low to sustain with the ordinance of the region. And obviously, with Tim and Mike's project and the master plan, there won't be any traffic. But even if we bring it from outside, we're looking at ten to nineteen trucks per day at the absolute most. So in closing, I'm going to ask Cory just to spend a minute on horse health and the problems and solutions that High Point has put together as part of their waste management program. We've addressed the crisis of leaching, offgassing, and landfill diversion, and this is, you know, thousands of tons of waste per year, and how it can benefit the community in the county. And then I'm going to hand it over to her to talk about the shavings that are literally made from the same quality, but just better. And I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay. I guess I'll step in. I am, my name is Cory Smallgange, S M A L L E G A N G E. And, okay, thank you, Paul, and I'm just taking over with the, if we can go to slide fifteen on the slideshow. And basically, this is just a slide showing how.
Hey Cory, I've only got fourteen on this one. The fifteen, so just talk, just talk to it.
The very last slide.
Got it.
It's with the fused gold wood shaving?
Yep. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent. Okay, so the, the, the main qualities that our, our bedding represents is that they are hypoallergenic, antibacterial, antifungal, and highly absorbent, as well as being dust-free. And so the biggest thing for horse owners and the trainers that is, they're going to find this very advantageous, because from a health perspective, we're going to mitigate a lot of the problems that large horse show grounds and racetracks have to try to control when they're using other, other bedding of poor quality. With our natural infusion of the End4Life compounds, our shavings will help prevent a lot of different, mitigate a lot of different health-related risk factors. For example, one of the biggest, biggest things that horses are subject to are, is inflammatory airway disease. And with our shavings being virtually dust-free, we will help mitigate the onset of, of any sort of inflammatory reaction caused by dust. Other pretty serious things that can happen with horses with other quality of shavings is allergic reactions caused by contact dermatitis, which with our bedding, we will mitigate that with the Natural4Life products, as well as fungal infections like scratches. And then, of course, with prevention of flies, we don't have the fly, with the fly population being lower, there is less chance of the fly bringing disease from one stage to the other. And so things like summer sores will be less and less common. So the, the horse owners and the trainers at the track will be really happy to, to have decreased the incidences of health problems in our, in the horses. Are there any questions about that?
Yeah, Cory, fantastic on that. One, you know, one thing from, from our perspective, as our horseman's representative moves out here in September, is making sure that we have rules or onsite expectations of turnaround from getting the manure from the stall to the, to the bins and then into the plant for processing as quickly as possible, reducing the fly content, reducing the potential diseases that may be either airborne or within, if they're lying in, in their own urine and feces, if they're getting any disease from that, making sure that we're on top of that. So, you know, that's a coordination point from us to them, in making sure that we have a very efficient and very thorough site that's environmental-friendly and also good for the environment, good for the county, and puts money in the tax system as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hey, Paul, question for you on this. You know, one of the things that we always talk about here is, you know, what's the sustainability? How do we make sure we're sta- we're sustaining the project on this? You know, a lot of that comes down to funding and things of that nature. How do we stand on that?
From a sustainable standpoint, you know, it, it's a word that gets sometimes overused, and it's integrated with environmental. And sustainability, for me and for this project, is to sustain an environmentally relationship between what is good for the county, good for the industry, good for the, the pocketbook, and making sure that that is always, we call them BMPs, but Best Management Practices, for waste management. And that will be written into the plan, so that as we build out the master plan, we will continue to have a sustainable approach. And we also look at what's called ESG. We give one percent to the planet back from the profits of our facilities. We also take a look at transparency in our financials and our hiring of our staff. And, and that, that ESG model and sustainable model is really important to me, but it's also part of our ethics of our company.
Fantastic. Thank you. Because of time, Mike, take us home on the manure management plan and oversight from that standpoint, and we'll get to the Q and A.
To beg a very brief, the last portion is taking what we have in the barns, being able to get it to the site. A majority of the water, the heavy usage of water and everything else that, the urine and washwater, will be sent to the plant underground. The other thing is, we will be transporting anything from every one of the stalls via vacuum-controlled unit, closed unit, and it will be taken over and dumped to that plant. We are also going to be opening up the idea for this facility to be used by the community. And the horses that are already in some sort of stable that want to use this type of shaving, this will be available. So the tipping fees are going to be quite a bit reduced, even though we do have somewhat of a free council to go to directly our, our landfill. The option is people will be going out and buying shavings, otherwise they won't be selling them over here. So the last little stage is everything we're going to be using in this facility for water is going to be reused at a later point. We're going to be putting plantings in the ground, we'll use a rewater there. We have to put dust control on the track, we have to have a controlled track environment, and that has to be done with water. All of that is going to be taken care of at this, through this one facility. Are there any questions? A lot of information, but.
Real quick one. Local job creation? Do you have a rough idea of how many jobs might be?
Yeah, so we will be, yeah, thank you so much. So we will hire nine staff per shift, an additional five staff in marketing, finance, and administration. And so we'll be looking at between fifteen and twenty staff per facility that we build, so that will be right in the heart of Brump. will be right in the heart of Brump.
And you said that's per shift, so you can do more than one shift throughout the day?
Yeah, sorry to sound budgetary and economic, but yeah, the second shift is a lot more profitable than the first shift. And so, we try to do two shifts, five days a week. And in the heart of the season, when all the horses are racing, they go on a circuit all around the country, there are certain months that are higher than others, and we push 24 hours a day if we need to. And then we have enough bedding in the off-season to work with further field regions.
One last little thing, I think you're going to ask me additional people, additional needs for like in our process? That's above and beyond what we're talking about here.
And then, the last question, sorry, when he spoke of water, you guys talked about using the, recycling it and such. As you said, the water that's going to be used about the amount of a single house, single families, so like 18, are we talking two acre feet for the whole 45,000 square foot facility? That's awesome.
Yeah, so the average household needs about 100 to 120 gallons per person per day in a flow rate of around 6 to 12 GPM, and we're running about 5 to 8 GPM.
Question, since this is wood-based, is this something that we could set up for other types of wood, not counting saltcedars, that, you know, the chippings they do in trees that are around here, or other locations?
So if that goes back to me again, yes, 100%. With pyrolysis, the other thing that we'd like to do is, yes, working with green waste, we can also put 30% of its total volume in plastic bags. So, the horse industry uses a lot of plastic bags to cover their bedding before it goes in because it's safer. And so, we're actually going to take back those plastic bags and run them through the pyrolysis unit, which will create electricity.
Thank you.
Touch that one more time, Paul. We've gotten some looks of, is that for real? And, you know, we talked about this a little bit, so go ahead and hit that one more time.
Yeah, so we're just acquiring all of the technology from Dr. Peter Schubert, who we've worked with for the last year. And we're going to be building out, and what will be so cool to have it in Nye County would be one of the first research development sites for fully recyclable green waste plastic bags. And I don't want to go too far here, but we're working on the process of taking that syn gas to hydrogen storage. And then we can take that, so any government building, hospital that needs multiple redundancies would have a hydrogen cell. So even if the power went out, electricity went down, you still have power. And that's my ultimate goal from a sustainability standpoint.
So would this be your first facility, or do you already have one in operation somewhere?
So we built the first prototype in 2015 in about an hour and a half north of Seattle. And that was using old technology, but it works and it's been fully tested. We've built prototypes in 2017 to 2020. And our first full facility will be in West Palm Beach, Wellington, Florida, where within an eight mile radius, they have over 200,000 tons of waste. And then, this will be our second, and we have three more in the process, including the United Kingdom.
Well, Paul, really appreciate and thank you very much that we bring this forward. You and your team have done a great job. Obviously, these are things which are on the planning board. We location to rent, the general direction on the facility is going to be very, very close to the barns, so we don't transport a lot of things across any property line. The last little tid, kind of the big tidbit is the fact that this is sustainable in a respect that it feeds itself. So we aren't always going to be utilizing an outside source, we'll be using what we already produce.
One thing that actually comes-
Yeah, 100%.
Yeah, let me take this for a second, Paul. One thing, one thing that comes to my mind is we've had sites here in town that maybe stacking manure 10 feet high, you know, and that's a one-off situation. But yet, it's still nuisance, it's still an issue. You know, this will be here and available to be able to picked up and handle that kind of stuff. Obviously, the owner has to do it and has to approve that. But yeah, you know, it would help manage the waste here in the county, here in the town, and address those kind of issues before they become bigger issues.
Thank you very much for allowing us to-
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
So I take it, since it was a presentation, I don't need to get public comment on that, right? Perfect. Thank you, gentlemen. Unless there are other questions you had for them, I think we'll move on to item eight, item nine, rather. For possible action, CU 2222, public hearing discussion and deliberation on a conditional use permit application to allow a storage yard for construction equipment at the property located at 131 South Frontage Road, assessors parcel number 03823423. Nye 3 LLC property owner, Alan Levitt, applicant agent. This item is final action by the Brump Regional Planning Commission unless appealed to the Board of County Commissioners or as otherwise announced. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow the storage of equipment and tractors. Basically, it'd be a display yard for tractors and equipment that would be for sale to the public. A conditional use permit is required to do that in the general commercial zoning district. This parcel is about 10,000 square feet in size. They're only proposing to use about 2,000 square feet of the lot. It should be a 40-foot by 50-foot portion of the parcel. This is basically an undeveloped lot. It does have a chain link fence, there's some parking blocks in the front part of the property, but there's no paved parking or anything like that. So, a site development plan would be required to go forward if they get approval of the conditional use permit. And we have recommend that, recommended that condition, condition number four would be site development plan approval. So with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report, and be glad to answer any questions you might have.
On the site, during the site development plan, is there going to be any requirements for paving or the lot improvements?
All the parking areas would have to be paved, that's a requirement in Nye County.
Right, so for those four spots that there, how many did they say?
Yeah, those areas are currently just gravelled, so they would have to provide asphalt paved parking.
What about the display areas? Like where they'd be putting the tractors for display?
It depends on, there's certain types of equipment that wouldn't require necessarily-
That's what I was wondering on.
So, tractors and things like that wouldn't have to be asphalt paved.
I think we had the same thing come up at the crane place, with the, wanting to waive the paving for the equipment, something like that. Okay.
Do we have an applicant?
Wake him up.
I don't show anyone on the phone either. Okay, well, it sounds like maybe nobody wants to come and talk on that. I will open public comment in case there's somebody from the public that would like to make a comment about this item. I take it you don't have anyone on the phone for that either? Sorry, I do not. And we don't have anyone at the podium, so I will close public comment. I would have liked to ask the applicant if they have read, understand, and agree with the conditions of approval, but lacking an applicant, we'll just have to assume that they do. Implied consent, precisely.
To the chair, just a question to the gentleman that's handling this particular item. You said that we don't understand what we might put down in this area in regards to, does it need to be paved or not inside the area where they're going to locate the equipment? Are they looking at some other type of material to put down on that property?
Well, they haven't stated that in their application, what they're going to put there as far as the surface.
So how would you know, how would you not know what to put there? I mean, you need to know something, so you need to have some kind of clarification of what they are actually going to put on that ground.
Well, that would obviously be part of the site development review. As it stands, with no waiver applications, it would have to meet the development standards, so. And we don't have any waiver applications at this point, but without the site development plan submitted, we don't know what they're even suggesting for that area.
They didn't make any statements at all, what they're putting there?
No. But he has been aware that he will have to go through site development.
Just leaves you open to say, what are you really going to put there for equipment? You know? So, if in the site development, when they come in to do that evaluation and what they put in there, and it doesn't meet any of the requirements, what are you going to do?
They'll have to either come before the board and get a waiver approved to waive that requirement, or they're going to be held to-
Just want to make it clear.
You know me well enough.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you, Chair.
And that's one of those, yeah, okay. The site development is one of the special conditions, so that would, okay, so we would see it if it happened.
All right. Okay, so unless there's further discussion, I think I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve CU 22-22, based upon the findings in the outline and subject to the conditions stipulated in this report.
A second.
Having a motion and a second, we'll consider the questions, starting with Commissioner Blackstock.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. We will move on. Moving on to item 10, for possible action, AB 22-1, public hearing discussion and deliberation on a request to vacate an abandonment, 35,229 square feet along South Everhard Road for the proposed roundabout improvements at Highway 160 and Mans Road. This item is final action by the Brump Regional Planning Commission unless appealed to the Board of County Commissioners or as otherwise announced. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a request to abandon a portion of Everhard Road of the right-of-way, which is currently in Nye County right-of-way. The reason for this is that the existing right-of-way, the alignment, it's not perpendicular, it's not a 90-degree angle with, where it intersects with Highway 160. So the new Everhard Road alignment will be a perpendicular 90-degree angle as it intersects with Highway 160. So basically, like, if you're familiar with Mans Road or on Exhibit A, we could see how Mans Road curves, and then as it goes into the intersection with the highway, it's at a right angle, 90-degree angle. So that's what the purpose of this is for. And so, staff's recommending approval, subject to the conditions. Glad to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, I would just like to make you aware as well that the applicant is on the line, if there are any questions for the applicant.
Excuse me, any questions for staff?
I have a question. I looked at this a couple of times. Are we having a roundabout at Mans and Everhard?
No, the roundabout is going to be at Mans. Everhard is just going to be, it's not going to be a roundabout there. It's just where the road, there'll be an ability to enter into Everhard from the highway and to exit Everhard to the highway. But the roundabout's further up at Mans.
That's what I thought, but I read a couple of things in here, it confused me on that. And I know this is probably going to go through, but I have a question. Why isn't all this coming off of Mans, where the roundabout's going to be, instead of having another point on 160?
If I can touch on that, one of the main reasons for this change is because NDOT requires certain accesses to be 90 degrees. Most of all, their accesses need to be that, if they're new. The current right-of-way doesn't allow for that, so that's, they're abandoning it as it is, as it stands now, and they're rerecording with the curve like Mans. The roundabout, that's privately developed, it's not funded by us at this time. Besides that, why it's not going all the way to Mans, that's up to the developer, it's not specifically on us.
Okay, well, I was just curious, that, you know, that's a major highway for this town. I guess I'm used to, when you have a development there coming down through here, all the access would have been coming off of Mans, nothing else off of 160, that close to each other, you know? And so, the main entrance would have been, you'd come down Mans, you got a roundabout, you come off of Mans, you widen Mans out, you have the entrance to that development off of Mans, not off of 160. But, that's my opinion on that, you know, but, one more point where people go in and out of the roadway and another accident.
And NDOT has their access management plan, which allows, you know, a certain amount of accesses in between distances. I believe it's around 500 feet in between, so.
What is the distance between Mans Road and the proposed new, I was trying to find that measurement? Because those distances are based off of speed, am I correct?
The distance requirement, no, they have, they have specific numbers just between their-
Right, but it's based off the speeds, like if it's 60, 65, then they have to be so far apart on ingress and egress, right?
Oh, sorry, I'm pulling it up on GPT.
Oh, sorry. I was just looking for the distance, I mean, it's obviously correctly within the NDOT distance requirement, correct?
I'm not NDOT, but I would assume so.
Perhaps we should give the applicant a chance to answer some questions.
Oh, yeah.
So, since we have the applicant on the phone, can we? Vicky, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me? This is Vicky Hafen Scott. The Everhard access does meet NDOT requirements. The speeds will be reduced in that area. And I believe it's somewhere around 485 feet from the roundabout to the Everhard, which would be a right-in, right-out-only access from Highway 160 onto Everhard. And we spent quite a bit of time designing that with the NDOT guideline, to make sure it met the requirements. Everhard is a major section line road and provides access to a number of properties to the west also, and is part of the development plan.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'm going to open public comment on this item at this time.
Good evening, Mary Ann Hollis, H-O-L-L-I-S. I'd first like to say that as a city girl, I've had more education about roosters and hens and eggs and horse poop than I could ever have gotten back home. And I'm sure I'm going to star at the next cocktail party when I, somebody says something about something, and I can jump right in with all that information. So, that having been said, I wanted to speak about the- I wanted to speak about the wording of these issue tonight about, quote, "roundabout improvements." And I, I didn't know exactly what that meant, but Mr. Waggoner was kind enough to have a brief conversation with me and explain just what you've discussed. I feel as though I've been circling and stuck in a roundabout for more than four months. I have come full circle with my issue, as this is where I began with this board. In those four months, I have made public records requests for the reportedly completed traffic study allegedly done in 2005. And none to date have been found. I made calls to the DPW, they went unanswered. And NDOT, who didn't know what I was talking about, spoken with the commissioners on three occasions, as you can confirm, with no direction about what I dubbed the "roundabout runaround." And here is where I started. So in less than a minute tonight, again in speaking with Mr. Waggoner, and I appreciated your time, sir, my request was for the traffic study supposedly done in 2005. No one to date can produce it. And the belief that it was done is just a belief. I would like to see that traffic study. So I am only speaking now, I had other things to say, but I'm only speaking now that I needed to go on the record that as of this point, there is no document of the traffic study report that is mandated in the agreement on Page 8 and Page 46 that must be done. So it's on the record and the search can continue on. I don't have the, the pull that many of you have, including Mr. Waggoner, to speak to the developer to produce that document. And if it hasn't been done, then it violates the agreement, because it sounds like things are moving forward to get that roundabout in there. And the other safety issues, some have been touched upon. My understanding that traffic coming from Vegas into Perump going at 70 miles an hour will enter into that roundabout, as will the traffic coming from Perump up will be accelerating to the 70 miles an hour to go to Vegas. And the left and right, so to speak, off of Mans will also be in that roundabout. And my question is, why do we need a roundabout? Why can't there be a traffic light? And I asked that question, and I had the response, well, it takes a lot of energy to run that traffic light. Now, the gentleman over here mentioned that there is no cost for the roundabout itself, but it's my understanding through the agreement that the county is responsible for the maintenance. Is that correct? Thank you. Oh.
We don't have an upfront cost. You are correct. NDOT requires us to be the applicant, because it's built in Ny County. So NDOT's sort of saying, here you go. At this point, the traffic study you're discussing, are you talking about the one for Walmart?
No. The traffic study that was mentioned somewhere, I forget where I read it, that supposedly was done in 2005 for the roundabout at Mans and 160.
All right, I just remember requests for a roundabout, or not a roundabout, traffic study request or public records request for a roundabout, or not a roundabout, Walmart 2005. That's all, the reason I brought it up, I'm sorry.
No, I have my copy of my public records request, and I also made a call to the DPW. And initially, the receptionist didn't know about it, but I would get a call back, and I never got that call back. But it's gone, I guess, a couple of levels up through several other people and several other boards. But to date, I believe it hasn't been produced. So I just need it on the record, because if this hasn't been done, and it's a mandate of the agreement, it's just, it's really not a minor thing. It's a piece of the big puzzle that's going to happen up there. But if, if that little piece is overlooked, you have to be concerned about what else might be overlooked. And in closing, I'd like to say, if you never went to Poof Dirt Farm, which no longer exists as it was, and went to their farm-to-fork meals, you missed something really special. Those owners, Kozu and Mike, loved the earth that they were on, provided services to the community, outreach with education, and it's a shame. It's a shame that because of ordinances that Poof Dirt Farm, as well as the Conservation Farm, where you could get the best turnovers in the world, have had to relocate. It's a shame. I'm, I'm not a farmer by any stretch of the imagination. I can't grow anything out here. But it, it's, it's a shame. And if you miss the experience of Poof Dirt Farm, you really miss something really special. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollis.
I have no comments on the phone.
You have no comments on the?
No comments on the phone.
Okay, then at this time, I will close public comment and turn it back to the board. I do think that the reason that we would entertain a traffic circle over a stoplight is because it's been proven that traffic circles actually are safer than stoplights. And there are a number of them, as you travel through Washington State heading towards Canada, that are four lanes wide and easily accommodate semi-trucks and do not slow the traffic down, and yet allow for safe changes of direction, so.
If, if I can touch on that, you're, you're correct. There's generally less traffic conflicts with a roundabout. The, if there are more, any normal crashes in a roundabout, they're generally slower speeds, so less fatalities than, say, a stoplight where someone reds a light and T-bone someone. So that's generally the, one of the reasons why they're safer. Traffic lights have their uses. They're also expensive to put in, but then so are roundabouts, so it's all a matter of a perspective for that, but.
Wasn't it something like eight points of contact on a roundabout and like 27 on a stoplight?
Yeah, it's some, around there.
Like it's huge difference of...
Just points of actual conflict, yes.
Point, sorry, points of conflict, yeah.
Thank you. So with, you know, just hearing about the question of the traffic study report, and I suppose as a question to staff if you see that question as being a barrier to approving the recommended motion?
No. No, that wouldn't have anything to do with what this agenda item's about. This is talking about nothing to, I mean, it says to accommodate the roundabout, but it's a intersection with the highway of its own. So a traffic study for the roundabout wouldn't really apply to this road.
And this is a vacation and abandonment, correct? Yes.
Do you like a motion?
I would. Ready to entertain a motion.
All right. I move to approve AB 221 based on findings as outlined within the staff report and subject to conditions stipulated within the report.
I second.
I'll call for the question, beginning with Commissioner Turner.
Aye.
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 Motion passes, and we will move on to item 12. For possible discussion, or for possible action discussion, deliberation, and possible direction to staff regarding a text amendment to NCC 17.4, .700, .A, .49, sexually oriented business.
I'll make this a short one for you guys. It's cleaning up the brothel code in the, in that zoning district. It was never supposed to be general commercial. It should have been light industrial all alone, all along, meeting and matching up for what's in the zoning code currently.
I'm going to just make one correction to that. It's actually not the brothel code. It's sexually oriented businesses in general. For instance, the adult bookstore, you know, strip clubs, that type of business. So basically, what, what we discovered here just recently with some conversations with an applicant is that there was a typo in the code that doesn't match that actual zoning. Sexually oriented businesses are not currently allowed in GC as a permissive use or conditional use. So this is just to correct that Scrivener's error, is more or less.
Okay, so just to make sure I'm understanding, there are currently no sexually oriented businesses in general commercial, is that correct?
Correct.
Did, did, did we timeout?
They're ready to go home, too. That was, that was your hint. So, yeah, you are correct. There is not any sexually oriented businesses in general commercial.
We, we have to wait until the last reset.
Oh, please enter your six-digit conference code. Welcome to free conference calling. Please enter your host code or press star to join the conference. Invalid host code. Please enter your host code or press star to join the conference. Hello, please enter your six-digit conference code. Welcome to free conference calling. Please enter your host code or press star to join the conference. We will now connect you to your call. There are two attendees in this conference.
Okay, we're, we're back up? Our monitors are coming back to life and everything, wow. Okay, awesome. All right, so before I open public comment on this, do we have any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open it for public comment.
I have no comments on the phone.
Seeing no one at the podium and no comments on the phone, I will close public comment. And discussion, direction?
Like to, don't we just pass this up?
We should give them some direction.
Direction to staff to, like, pass this on to the B O C C? Yeah. That's my recommendation.
I'll be happy to second that.
There's no motion yet.
It's a... It's mostly, uh, direction, so we don't actually have to vote on it, but we can take that direction and give that to staff so they can move forward with this draft to the B O C C.
Perfect.
Okay. With that, future meetings, workshops, discussion, and direction concerning items for future meetings, workshops, set date, location, and time. So our next meeting is Wednesday, August 10th at 6 o'clock in these chambers. And we don't have any other upcoming workshops, correct?
That's correct.
Perfect.
We, we are, just to give you guys a heads up, being that we have a couple of new members, we will have an item on the next agenda to revisit the master plan update that we've been working on. It got kind of stalled out when we weren't able to have public workshops. But just to kind of bring the new commissioners up to date and kind of refresh everybody's memory as to where we went and kind of what we had, you know, came up with, and then also give you our plan to move forward, because our goal is to actually have a document to the B O C C by the end of this year. So we're going to work on it pretty aggressively between now and then, so.
And we will need to have workshops on that.
Yes.
Okay. Final public comment for any items not listed on this agenda?
I just have to do it. John Koenig, K-O-E-N-I-G, for the record. I've decided that I'm never eating chicken again.
Thank you for that, that was priceless. I take it no one on the phone?
No comments on the phone.
With that, I will close second public comment, and we are adjourned.